There you go.
Hello?
That was for those three, right there.
All three?
Okay, we are back in session for our afternoon. If you have not done so, please mute your phones. We're gonna do a little, something a little bit different today because we had quite an unusual morning. We're gonna continue with public comment. So if anyone was here this morning and didn't get to have your public comment on, um, this is not on items that are up for this afternoon. This is to continue the public comment that we had this morning. So does anyone here want to address the board that didn't get to get their moment this morning?
Wow, this is a pleasant surprise. I've got a very, very important thing to be at and I thought I'd have to be waiting. Jim Marinari, uh, 30409 Elum Road, Wesley Chapel, Florida. And, uh, I don't think I have to be sworn, do I? Okay.
No, no, no.
All right, public comment, all right. Uh, well, uh, first of all, uh, that, all that business this morning with the one A, one way in, one way out with the development coming. I agree completely with those folks and, and my point has been for years is that we've gotta look at the overall picture. So it was designed that way, it was approved that way. You, how many steps did it go through where everybody said, oh, this is a good idea? And then now they're looking at putting the, uh, entrance and exit on Elum. That's part of the cascading effect that every decision that y'all make affects people. So, okay, great, now there's a hundred and twenty-six people coming out on Elum and increasing the traffic there. Um, I, I do live on Elum, the speeding's terrible, the driving's terrible, um, and it's just more and more and more. Uh, one of my questions, uh, is with the traffic studies and, and the like. And I, I actually came here to speak on two, uh, of the issues on Pasco Road, uh, development. Uh, one is which I, I saw the traffic study was done in, uh, August of twenty-three. What's happened in the past year and a half? I mean, the, 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 the patterns have changed, the number of people that have lived here have changed. So some of the stuff that we're, we're dealing with and we're looking at that as an individual, uh, uh, an individual number based upon that snapshot in time. But what's happening is six, seven, eight different developments are doing the same thing, looking at the same number. They're not kinda going into the pot and it's not like you have, you know, a, a capacity of five hundred cars. So right now we're at four hundred, this development adds five. And they go, well, it's only four hundred and five. And then the other development adds fifty, oh, it's four hundred and fifty-five. It's not adding and, and being added in. So when you're making decisions like this, like rezoning the, uh, the agricultural, uh, portion of, uh, of Old Pasco Road, which I think Mr. Waite and, and the board, and I think you spoke out about it before, there was a previous, um, uh, item or development that had tried to go in and, and you said it's incompatible. It may have been on the, on the east side of Pa, of Old Pasco, but in general, I don't remember. A hundred and six townhomes on that property, that equestrian property, um, i- it just, there's, it's a perfect area to step down. It, so just let's please keep in mind that everything that you do affects-
Thank you.
-other things.
And your time is up.
And-
And I, I think, I do think though that we do add all the different developments. They all get into the mix when we're looking at traffic.
They don't.
Huh?
They don't.
Well, there's the, there's the transportation expert sitting over there. So we'll ask him when he comes up. Okay, um, who's next?
I have Dr. Kirk Phillips.
Do you have something you want to be distributed? Okay, um, I'll take a motion.
I'm a, for second.
All in favor, aye?
Madam Chairman, counsel, the morning, the afternoon. I'm here for nothing more than to give you awareness of what we've been doing.
Just your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm Dr. Kirk Phillips, also known as Captain Kirk, two zero three one, Waterview Drive, Holiday, Florida. I'm here with the Pasco Coastal Improvement Council, a nonprofit citizen organization.
He said all morning.
Yes, ma'am. I think I might've got confused with another group. I just wanted to give you an awareness briefing. It's very simple. It's an executive summary of sixty years of research and analysis of the twenty-four miles of Pasco County's coastal regions and what has happened. It's specifically focused on the past seventeen years when technology advanced where we can better understand the implications of what's happened to our waterways and our flows. I'm not here about the manatees, the fish, the grass and all that stuff, the scallops. I'm here on infrastructure, resiliency, flooding, insurance costs and tax implications of this. Mr. Paul Bybee handles the other side of it. The bottom line is, you can see the front picture. All eight water basins of Pasco County are impaired, both with silt and chemicals. Zero slip permits have been applied with the EPA to take any corrective action. The recent flooding and events that everyone keeps saying is once in a lifetime and all that stuff is really because what's happened over time by no intentional fault. We created a delta similar to Norland. So now that we have weather remints, the water can't escape. It's basically, if you think about it, we're trying to fix the drain, we're trying to fix some of the sewer pipes, but we're not focused on the big plant that has to process it all. That big plant is clogged up. That in turn is creating worse conditions for our roads, our flooding, et cetera, when these storms come in. The events aren't getting worse if we're not maintaining and improving as the county grows and expands. So I want you to look at this. I was at the meeting last week, uh, me and Jerry was actually sitting behind you. Jerry's with, uh, Congressman Bill Arakas' office, we're both retired Air Force. And I heard about Anclou Island and I wrote a note.
That was me.
Yes, I was trying not to mention names, Madam Chairman. But I, I wrote a note and handed it to him and I said, we're already talking to the federal agency about that. That would be a federal and two county approach. But when you look at Gulf Harbor, there's a cause and effect. When we do something, you have to take that silt debris and move it somewhere that fixes the longshore drift which has been disrupted. And that's the ultimate goal of what we're trying to repair. From Crystal River to Tarpon Springs, correct the longshore drift and then Mother Nature will naturally repair herself a lot. If we do Gulf Harbors like we mentioned, it will naturally shift silt back out to Anclou Island and we don't have to rebuild Anclou Island. This is all evidence-based. All we're doing as a group is stepping back and looking at it and trying to work with the cities and officials and say, we're here to advise you free of charge, anything we can do, we're here to help you. And Paul Bybee will talk-
I want us to pay attention to this, I really, really do. Go ahead.
So next week in DC, I actually had the National Geospatial Agency run the models to show me the silt shifts over the past seventeen years to validate all that. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, and I, I mean-
Is Dr. Bellis here to talk to me?
I don't see Dr. Bellis, but this is public comment, so, um, but I know that I wanna talk to you about doing something about this.
Okay.
And I bet Commissioner Mariano does too, so, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Jen Kerewak?
Thank you. Pastor Jen Kerewak, one five nine two five, Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida. When I first, uh, came to speak at a, at a board meeting, I brought forth Galatians six, beginning at eight. For he who sows to his flesh will of the flesh reap corruption, but he who sows to the spirit will of the spirit reap everlasting life. And let us not grow weary while doing good, for in due season we shall reap if we do not lose heart. Therefore, as we have opportunity, let us do good to all, especially to those who are of the household of faith and those here today. And so I just wanna share with you, and I've, I've got some photos that I brought. Um, I've attended these meetings attempting to work through, you know, being respectful of and appreciating the pledge of allegiance. That, that should remind each of us that we are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all people. The justice not necessarily being to accommodate the wants of everyone within the business of Pasco. We certainly couldn't do that, I would have a whole lot, but, but what is just for all parties. I began attending to advocate for the families and residents of Shady Hills. And I am advocating today and implore you to address the perception that there is a lack of fairness and equality, justice to the people of, all the people of Pasco County. And I stand before you today continuing to advocate for those unanswered questions to receive answers and most importantly, for the safety of Pasco County residents. On April first, twenty twenty-five, between five and six PM, I witnessed at the corner of Green Glen and Shady Hills Road, there was a young man in the road and he had been hit. And this was a chain reaction as the result of one accident at Softwind and Crellin Drive and Shady Hills Road. And it continued down until there was a young man that was hit and unfortunately, he passed away. Beyond that, as they were not able to get in, there was issues with getting public safety in. Um, you know, not that the folks in public safety don't wanna do their job, but we're, obviously they do, they wouldn't do what they do. And unfortunately, there were within forty-five minutes, four accidents. And as we continue to build in Shady Hills, especially townhome developments, one going behind Cruz Lake and another application that I understand was recently submit, submitted off of Old Shady Hills Road. I ask that with, with great concern, that you certainly would make Shady Hills Road the widening, not just a sidewalk. And I appreciate the sidewalks, um, we need crosswalks if we're only gonna have a sidewalk. There are four schools, the first one being there in nineteen seventy-four, and yet the only improvement to the road, they're very minimal.
Okay, nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry, these pictures are horrible, so.
I have Edgar Perez. Michael Poulterak?
Good afternoon, Michael Poulterak, nine one five two, Kenton Road, Wesley Chapel, three three five four five, in the great state of Florida. First off, I want to let you guys know, I appreciate all of you, I do. And your team, your, your directors out here, I really, really do. I know it's hard to see sometimes, but I appreciate all of you and I appreciate all of the work they're doing for you. There's one thing, I'm probably known as the park guide, you guys know, but, um, Epperson CDD, I did wanna point out that they have no park space in their entire CDD. And, um, I'm gonna move on to a bigger issue beyond the parks here. Because in November of twenty-three, you guys voted for, uh, rezoning for an MPUD, it's called Kenton MPUD. Eight hundred residences, one hundred and forty-eight acres, and you were bamboozled. And I'm gonna say that straight up. We have the emails, they're here, all the way back from twenty twenty-one. We're planning, directed, let me, let me back a step. Uh, madam, when I came and met with you, the planning division was there also. And I brought up an MPUD where the planning division told the developer, you have to increase density. And we were told unanimously that would never happen with this planning division. So from twenty twenty-one, this email right here from the developer to the planning division, wow, you blindsided us. We didn't know that the increased density was gonna be requested in this location. It's because it falls in the community hub. It's only supposed to be medium density. There's not supposed to be any high density in this area, okay? There's not supposed to be any high density in this area, okay? Twice, and I'm going to flip because I only have a minute twenty-seven left, I apologize. Twice, the developer's engineers was trying to clarify with the planning division that you want high density.
You're going too fast for me.
I know, I'm sorry. You only gave me three minutes.
Just email that to me.
Yes, ma'am, I will. Community hub, we're only supposed to have medium density and intensity for residential. There's not supposed to be any apartments in this hub. Here's the purpose and intent. Why is that important? Because even though part of your planning division up here to the planning commission, under oath, says the comp plan is aspirational, here's your actual land development code. All CC MPUD development applications shall be consistent with the intent and policies of the Connected City Comprehensive Plan. We've got a little problem here. I looked up the word aspirational in both the land development code and the comp plan. It doesn't exist. There is no aspirational in either of them. Here's the list of high-density apartments that have been put into the Connected City in the three zones that were not intended to have high density. It was supposed to be medium density. There's been times in the past, and I very much appreciate Director Engel, I do, but he's been handed some, some wildfires to try to put out and fix. This morning was a perfect example, and this is another one. We need, I have three requests from you in five seconds. The first one is, I need you to please go back. The site is not approved by the planning division. I need you to go back to the developer, give them back what they originally asked for, which was single-family residential, which meets the comp plan and the land development code for this district. The second thing is, it is in the land development code and the master plan that the Connected City will have an advisory board that will be made up with residents of the Connected City. It is time we do that, so that there is another layer of protection for you, because a lot of these things coming through could be absolved and brought to your attention and your staff to create motion and fixes without it having to be here, and without, like the group earlier, having to get attorneys involved in lawsuits. These things are unacceptable. They're unacceptable.
Can you, your time is up, but can you send me your site plan? I mean, your, um, presentation. Send it to all the commissioners.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer McCarthy. I do not see her approaching. Tanya Riddlesworth.
She had to leave.
Thank you.
Oh, she's a lady.
Camila Bride. Okay, she's not approaching. Francis Silva. Okay, not approaching. Andrew Alfieri. Okay, not approaching. Dr. Iman. Okay, thank you. Sarah Gonzalez. Okay, she is approaching.
Um, someone make a motion, please, to receive and file.
Uh, yes, I actually need to enter in these legal documents.
Someone make a motion?
I did.
Yeah, but, but, and we got a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, um.
This, this is for the main file. These are for each to have a front of them. If we can start with those pictures.
All right, thank you. So, name Sarah Gonzalez, one six six seven seven Albright Road. I'm here to enter more evidence in code enforcement complaint filed by Tom, petition three twenty-five twenty-five. First calling ten seventeen, inoperable vehicle, no violation. Eleven seventeen seventeen dumpster, twelve four seventeen commercial vehicle, first responded tow truck on call. Two thousand eighteen rented, uh, parking for tow truck, monthly cost five miles away. Two two, two twelve eighteen inoperable, no violation, RVs, recreational vehicles. Three fourteen in op vehicles, same ones, no violation. Seven twenty-four eighteen commercial vehicle, family in town, three days at the RV. Nine nine nineteen, commercial vehicle, first responder on call, no truck there when code got there. This morning, seven AM, Tom in front of our house in PJ's taking pictures. Called Pasco Sheriff's, filed false report of violence against husband. Code showed up, heard deputy tell the Tom to leave homeowners alone. It is in the code report. On one twenty-nine twenty, commercial vehicle, first responder on call, Tom called job harassing Pasco towing. Two ten twenty, husband went to courthouse, filed petition versus Tom Boglino. Stalking, no choice for harassment, no, no court appearance. He went back later in the day. Discuss, decision was allegations do not meet criteria for stalking, no choice for harassment. Two twenty twenty, commercial vehicle closed COVID, first responder. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, referred to start paper trail by code enforcement. Eleven fourteen twenty-one, emailed Mariano's office about Tom shot down, referred, private civil matter. One twenty-three, in twenty-three, in op vehicles, RVs, no violations. Two two twenty-three, in op vehicles, same vehicles from one January, no obligate, no, no violation. Six twenty-three twenty-four, in op vehicles, RVs, same thing from twenty twenty-three, same ones. Four twenty-one of twenty-five, same thing, another report, same vehicles, no violation. At this point, if you would look at the police report that you all have in front of you, we need to have someone in code enforcement or commission to tell Tom to leave us alone. This harassment has caused financial burden, stress, anxiety, depression, with most being non-violation. Tom's wasting taxpayers' money for the thirty-plus code enforcement to do their job. And Jeff, I, and I have spoken on this behalf. Before, in briefly, in civic association meeting, he handed me his card and said, call him, to never get an answer. Refer to code five three zero dash point five point C point five for RVs. This is an ex, a continuous harassment. We are constantly in code. Please refer to the pictures that I handed you, the first set of pictures, if you wouldn't mind showing to him. I've got six seconds left. I would like you to flip through those pictures. These were taken this last report. And if you look at the property, Patrick came to my house the other day, from the Phillips. He came out, I asked him yesterday, actually, as a matter of fact, he, I asked him if, okay. And your time is up.
My time's up, I'm sorry.
And the pictures are here. Either way, those pictures, if you look to them, they were taken. We moved our stuff on twelve. Ma'am, your time's up.
I know. I just want to make sure, did you say your name and address for the record?
Yeah.
Sarah Gonzalez, one six six seven seven Albright. Thank you.
One six six seven zero.
Six six seven seven Albright Road. It's also in the email I emailed last night, because I could not, and I have a copy of everything.
All right, did you guys get the pack? You want to pass it down that way? Then, then this pack goes to the clerk. Okay.
Thank you.
Next.
That's all I have that signed up. Um, is there no one on WebEx? No one's on WebEx from this morning either.
Okay, if there's anyone else here who would like to address the board, please come on up and line up. Come on up.
Hi, um, Daphne Stays. I just wanted to come before you.
Uh, ma'am, we need your address as well.
Oh, one six two three zero Crela Drive. Um, I just wanted to come before you today to let you know how much I've been let down by the county. My perception that every email, phone call has either been ignored or not cared about. I trust the Pasco County officials, thinking you were helping me out when you already had no intention of helping me through this hostile taking of my property by a developer. I've been told by commissioners and others that staff messed up, but you all didn't fix it. You let them continue to violate my rights as well as my property. Um, I beg that you speak with me to undo the mistakes the Pasco County staff made, allowing developer to take my land. Um, you know, they have an emergency exit by Mary G. Their address is one four nine three four Shady Hills Road. Um, they said that they were houses to buy. Now it's rent. It's going to be section eight, going right through my property. I can't sell my house. I'm not worried about flooding. I've, I've been contacted by David Engel. I'm not worried about flooding. My home's trashed. I have cracks in my roof. I have mold. And I have, I haven't mowed my yard. I mowed once last year. I'm, I haven't mowed this year. I don't care about it. It's not a house. Or it's not a home, it's a house. Uh, we are screwed. We can't sell. We can't do anything, and it's totally illegal. That is not, they cannot take that for a, uh, their ingress egress main exit. That is an ingress egress for utilities. I pay taxes on it.
What was the address again?
One six two three zero Crela Drive.
How, how you spell that?
C R E L A.
Cre- Crela?
Crela.
Crela Drive, okay.
Crela Drive. And it was zoned to be ten homes on nineteen point something acres back in two thousand and one. And this developer just came in and keeps changing stuff. There's names changed, things marked out. And no, no signatures next to it. It's Gill's. It's the Gill's family that sold it. So I'm just, I'm just, like, I can't even sell my house. I've, I've been up and been in front of everybody. Jack's been nice enough to come out and check it out, but, I mean, though I've, it's been over a year, and I've sat here and wasted my time because I thought the county was going to help me, you know? And nobody, it's just running out the clock to where they landlocked themselves. I've got them flying down the road. I'm working twenty-four seven, three sixty-five Thanksgiving.
Sorry, your time's up. Uh, I don't know what we can do on that one. I think we, staff's met with her.
Staff messed up bad.
Yeah, well.
Um, Carbala, I don't know if you want to talk to me about it. You were going to talk to me, but you put me away.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be right now, so.
Okay.
Maybe he can reach out. I don't, I don't know what the answer is on that one. Jack, that's your district?
I've had David Allen out there, I had JP Murphy out there.
Dave, I've done anything.
Okay, well, we can't solve it from here right now, but Mr. Allen, you're going to meet with her? Or are you going to tell us what the issue is?
She has been advised that this is a private matter.
It's a civil matter?
It's a civil matter.
Okay, it's a civil matter. Is that what you're going to tell us?
Uh, well, Chair, David Allen, Assistant County Administrator Development Services. We've reached out several times to have a meeting with, with the resident, and we still have an open invitation that, that we would go out and meet with her.
Oh, you have not met with her?
But that was about flood.
Okay.
Not about.
Okay, well, he doesn't do flood, he does development. Um, okay, is there, you want to come on up?
So y'all know my name and address. I'm not going to say it, right?
Nope, you gotta say it.
Nancy Hayeswood, three four one one oh, a nice place. Um, y'all have a lot of heavy things in front of you. And I know that in your wisdom, you'll come to the right answers. I, I just wanted to remind you, the Northeast Rural Area Plan is still there. And the history behind it was that we heard that forty thousand units were going to be approved in between Dade City and Zephyr Hills. We started going nuts in the Northeast Rural Area. And the county, in their wisdom, said, we'll give you the Northeast Rural Area Plan in exchange. And it can be rural. So we've been fighting to keep it rural ever since. And I, I'm hoping that maybe we can do some things to help keep it rural. I've got an idea, or two, or three. One of the things is pervious surfaces. I understand there are about four different areas out there to do it. And one of them is the, the grass with the rocks, or not the rocks, but the blocks in between it. And then there's apparently one that's plastic and another one that's asphalt. But I think the Northeast Rural Area is going to be your saving grace for water if you don't overdevelop it or put huge amounts of development in. You've got, it's the high recharge area, the Brooksville Ridge, and the green swamp right there. So the pervious surface I would recommend is shell. The other one is for maybe walkways and parking lots for it. And I was thinking also, since you've come up with tiny homes, let's switch it from doing huge homes on small lots to large lots with small homes. But again, lowering the density and saving your natural resources to help out the rest of the county. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it.
I have no one else to sign that.
And we have no one online?
No one's online.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to our one thirty meeting, and the first one up is P thirty-eight.
Item P thirty-eight was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I think my mic was off. I'll redo that. I was like, why can't I hear myself? All right. Item P thirty-eight was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman. So P thirty-eight was pulled. We're going to pull up for a discussion.
Did it have to say anything?
Yes, and.
This is an ordinance, so it's not pulled. It's, it's your presentation.
Oh, yes, sir, would it, would it?
I think you should give your name and the department.
I'm sorry, Jerry Williams, Public Infrastructure Fiscal, Fiscal Business Administration Department.
Thank you.
Okay. Piffa two five zero two five three, an ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners, Pasco County, Florida, dissolving the Foxridge Municipal Service Benefit as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and providing for an effective date of viability.
Does everyone need a full presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I'm sad that they're doing this personally.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So I'm going to say, I, I don't want to see this go, but I'll, I'll listen to the projection. There's a lot of stormwater stuff still be down out there. Uh, you've got money in it. I think we should be looking to try to find a way to fund it. Let's go study this thing and bring it back to us to study. What are the stormwater projects left to do? What's the cost going to be? And then how can we go look at getting funding for it?
Well, I heard they have a whole bunch of money in this thing.
They do.
Why don't they put their power lines underground?
I think they want to, I would think they want to stop flooding first, but either way, let's, let's hear a presentation, but.
All right. So you and I are kind of alike.
Some apologies, Commissioners. So on, uh, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, so the advisory board met. They discussed, uh, the possibility of, uh, stormwater improvement projects, and also the possibility of dissolving the MSBU. So after further discussion, they came to determination that they did not want to pursue the additional stormwater projects. They wanted to dissolve and receive refunds for the available fund balance. So the, um.
Where is this?
I'm sorry, ma'am, would you like me to show you?
I'm talking myself. I just want to find out where it is. I, I don't know where Foxridge is. We got a lot of foxes in the county. What's the chapel?
It's on south side of fifty-four, near Apple.
Okay.
This is the old Pasco Heights Roden Bridge District, which is why, which is why the MSBU was created in the first place. Was to, because the Pasco Heights Roden Bridge District was defunct, and the county had to step in and take it over.
All right, but I'll hear the presentation like Commissioner Mariano asked, and then we'll jump into it.
So the MSBU consists of eleven point five one rural miles, six hundred and ten ERUs, and seven hundred and fifty-five acres. And this is a, a map depicting the boundaries of the MSBU. And what we, uh, what we'd like to do is, uh, recommend accept public comment and adopt the proposed ordinance.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Mariano.
Yeah, so I was, I was asking staff for, I need, I need more information. I want to see the projects, et cetera. I think they're reacting to an advisory board. But keep in mind, this thing's been in place for many, many years, some years?
I think, uh, it was approved in two thousand and, I think it was fourteen.
Okay. So with all that said, they've been collecting money, trying to do these projects. They have, I think, this advisory was, the desire to end it, but all those people that wanted this since two thousand and fourteen, they were here in this, in this very office, very, uh, commission, and just saying how they wanted to get this stuff fixed. We had projects together. We had a team going out there. I was out there when they're digging the trenches, cleaning some stuff up that needed to be maintained. There's solutions out there to get this fixed. There's like a classic infill that they're, you know, they've been, they've assessed themselves. We, we've put the MSB in place. It is a great project to finish, but we need to finish it. We can't end it now. And all those people that have contributed over the years to put this money in to get this done should have the project done.
So what, so what is it? There's, there is a stormwater?
There's a stormwater plan. If you talk to the plan, that'd be great. Maybe Jason could.
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners, Jason Mickel, Public Works Director. Uh, yeah, so we, we've been working with this community since two thousand and fourteen. Um, there, there's a couple of different items that they'd like to get done in the community. Some of it's stormwater conveyance, some of it was, um, paving of the roads. So they had, they had. So they had, they had charged themselves to make some decisions with where they wanted to go. Um, when we gave them an estimate on approximately what it would cost for the stormwater plan, it was a lot more than they had collected. So they decided at that point that...
But that doesn't mean they don't have responsibilities for their ponds, and where's that money gonna come from? Just 'cause they dissolved their little HOA or whatever doesn't mean the rest of the taxpayers are gonna pick it up. So I would be a hundred percent against getting rid of this, if that's the way that community's gonna be able to fund their stormwater cleanups.
So as a, as an option, um, if, if it's okay with the Board, well, Public Works could take the lead in meeting with the community again, um, and assessing our plan and what we could possibly do with stormwater. Maybe there's some options for some funding, um, that we could, we could provide, and then take a look at what else could be done. Now, remember, we do have an MSTU, right, to do the road paving, so they don't have to...
They don't have to put it towards the roads, but they can put it towards fixing their stormwater ponds.
Yep, exactly.
I think we should put a plan of the place. But let, let, let's, let's see the full presentation of what's to be done, what can be done. Uh, then maybe even put a contingent upon, when you get the stormwater done, we'll then put the, uh, road project into the network.
Um, well...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I, so you gotta go back, and I'm not disagreeing with, with either of the Commissioners. I'm, but the historical framework of this was this land was cut up and subdivided, and all its infrastructure was supposed to be put in by the Pasco Heights Road and Bridge District. It was not a county responsibility.
Right.
That was not done. They didn't maintain their roads. When the Road and Bridge District disappeared, state told us we had to take it over as the local government of jurisdiction. County Attorney's recommendation at that time was to create this MSBU and at least get them up to a level playing field with the rest of the county network. Once we get them there, it would make sense to dissolve them and put them into the, into the stormwater utility. I mean, they, they are in the stormwater utility, but have stormwater maintained and the roads maintained based as everybody else has. But to my knowledge, they haven't been brought up to any kind of a level of standard for the county. They've just been collecting money out there.
And then that's why I didn't wanna see this thing get dissolved, knowing the passion of the people from ten years ago, how much they wanna get this done.
Yeah.
And we kept it going.
I mean, there's regular pond maintenance that subdivisions have to do, that costs money, and how else, how else are they gonna collect the money to do that pond maintenance?
I'm not even sure they have ponds.
How, how much is in the fund right now?
It's, it's over a million, because...
Just, just a little over a million, man.
So can't they start pond by pond cleaning it up?
Just to, just to clarify, there is more than just pond maintenance out there. A lot of the conveyance has been overgrown with trees.
Well, they gotta start fixing it. We can increase the MSBU so it gets fixed.
Well, Madam Chair, I, I'll caution you a little bit with, with the response you may get back, because this is abutting to a Meadow Point community. They're saying that when Meadow Point community actually made it worse for them, so I think it's, we just need to take step by step and literally go study, look at it. And I, and I frankly think that we should be looking to the state, uh, as for matching funds with the million dollars we got, maybe another million. Now it shortens the gap up, maybe makes it affordable, and maybe they say, you know what, this is worth doing. But I think we need to really take a little close look at this, rather than dissolve it. Let's go look at it, go back to the people, go back and study it, get the state rep involved, get the state senator involved, and find out what we can do. Because, you know, Senator Burgess even says, "We wanna see these things done." Let's let him look at it. Maybe he can step in and help us as well. Because, I mean, with a million dollars and knowing these people wanted this for ten years ago, I, I think it's worth taking a bigger step rather than just dissolve this thing.
Where are you gonna get the other, uh, matching fund?
That's one thing. That's why I'm talking about the state. You get, you get Representative Magar?
Ask the state for it.
You could, it's stormwater.
They do that all the time.
Yeah, why not try?
All right, well, uh, there may be residents here who want to speak. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this issue?
Madam Chair, I have no one signed up and no one on WEX for this item.
Okay, then. I'll take a motion.
Move to, move to continue ninety days.
What's the mechanism to make, make them spend the money? Because ultimately, they're looking for tax relief, right? That's why they're doing it, so they don't have to keep paying more into the tax fund. It's pretty simple.
No.
Yeah, if they get rid of their...
They don't wanna, they don't want...
If they get rid of their MSBU, then they all get refunded, then they're only paying the MSTU for the road paving. So they're looking at tax relief. They're looking to try to not have to pay more taxes. That's probably the thought behind this, which is a fair thought. I don't blame them.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
But if there's a million bucks sitting in there and it's just compounding and it's still being, what's the mechanism to, to make, to spend this money? The county say spend it, or they have to say spend it, or what's the, what's the rules of engagement?
This is your MSBU. It would, Public Works would be the one doing the projects.
So then my question is, why hasn't been Public Works been going into the fund and getting some level of work done over the last?
Ten years.
Ten plus, ten years.
Yeah, I think Jason can probably speak to that. There's just been a number of, um, I guess I'll just use chicken and the egg sort of conversation. They relate to the road, stormwater.
They're gonna wanna get rid of it, 'cause they're not seeing any action.
Until they get flooded, then they say, "What happened?"
These folks have been living... They know what they're living. They know where they're living. They understand their community and the lay of the land, literally, so...
But Commissioner, if I could, Commissioner Waitman, keep this in mind. We were here with the public hearings in this, and they were all complaining about the flooding, the flooding, the flooding. The reason the MSBU was created is to solve those things. Now, they haven't, maybe haven't done the assessment high enough for it yet, but again, waiting for the projects to be brought. I think now is the perfect time to go look at everything. These people put themselves in the position of, we had to solve it, this was the solution. We just haven't executed it. We need to execute before we dissolve it.
And you've not been here when we've solved it this way, but this is how this got solved for your golf course community, and they're flooding.
Timber Oaks?
Timber Oaks, exactly, MSBU.
I understand. My question is, why hasn't the county taken the funds and put the funds to work? Now, when it's triple the cost today than what it was over the course of time?
Yes, sir. So, so my, my understanding, but I'll just defer to, uh, to Jason. So that the requirement to get them in a better situation in terms of stormwater runoff was gonna be, happen in several phases. So I believe a single phase has occurred, but additional phases would have had to happen. And those additional phases would have caused an increase in their assessment, so they made the determination based upon estimated cost to pause.
So I use the analogy, how many traffic accidents need to happen before they get out, before they get a red light? That's the same...
Well, they've, they've adopted, the MSBU adopts a pay-go model, so they, until they have the funds to do the next phase of the project, nothing happens.
Well, then, then, then we're going in the wrong direction. Sorry.
So if we can't do anything, we'll either give it back to them...
No.
Or we need to get work, because it's just gonna get worse and worse and worse, and the funds aren't gonna keep up with the volume of work that needs to happen?
I say let's find a way to help them get it done.
I'm with you.
Yeah, because they're gonna get flooded.
And again, I, I think, I think we all need to go back and look at historically what happened, how this all happened, go look at the minutes. Maybe get them produced for us, send us the link, so we can listen to the testimony that was done way back when. Historically, I think it will be very helpful. And then I, I would like to give staff time to go out and study it, put a financial plan together, bring it back to us, and let's go look at it. And then we can make a full, good, a very good decision, uh, to what's the best thing to do, but we don't have enough information on that yet, and I certainly don't wanna close this thing out now. So I'm gonna move to continue. Do you think, is ninety days enough or any longer?
Ninety days is fair.
All right, so let me continue this ninety days.
August, the August fifth, um, your next, the Dade City meeting in the ninety-day region would be August fifth at one thirty or soon thereafter.
Second? Um, and under discussion, I heard, so based on what Commissioner Waitman said, you had MSBU and MSTU?
Well, yeah, the MSTU is countywide.
Wait, wait.
He's the local paving.
Oh, the local one, okay, so, 'cause...
The paving, there's...
Right, so they don't have to worry about paving anymore. We just wanna focus on the stormwater.
Correct.
Maintenance and whatever it is that needs to happen. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good, thank you. P thirty-nine.
Item P thirty-nine. Hold on, I'm looking for my publication. Here it is. Item P thirty-nine was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, item P thirty-nine is PDE twenty-five zero one seven four. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two dash fifteen and sheet fourteen, from rez three, residential three dwelling units per gross acre, to rez six, residential six dwelling units per gross acre on approximately eighteen point three six acres of real property located at the northeast corner of Old Pasco Road and Hadlock Drive, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repeal or severability in an effective date. This comes through with recommendation, uh, from local planning agency and the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department to approve, approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote, and there's a presentation of so desired.
Okay, um, board members, do you wanna see a presentation?
I would like one.
Okay, let's, let's roll.
We'll have, uh, Amy Toll, Principal Planner.
Good afternoon, Amy Toll with Planning, Development, and Economic Growth. So today before you is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, uh, for Old Pasco Road. It is a small-scale plan amendment. This is the adoption hearing. The applicant is proposing an amendment from rez three, residential three dwelling units per gross acre to, uh, rez six, residential six dwelling units per gross acre, to allow for a hundred and six planted townhomes on approximately eighteen point three six acres. Here's the property that's located in the South Market area and urban service area. The subject site being located off of Old Pasco Road. Here's just a context smack to give you some, uh, perspective of what's in proximity of the area. Uh, you do have planned developments that are within a mile radius. It is also abutting rural area four, and there's two schools in proximity to the subject site. Uh, this is the transportation network map. The applicant has agreed for off-site improvements. Um, in this map, you'll notice the red area, uh, Old Pasco Road, a segment from, excuse me, from Old Mill Road to, uh, Sedgway Boulevard. Uh, they will be, uh, designing, permitting, and constructing the four-lane roadway. On that segment, it is an off-site improvement, um, that will be set forth in the conditions of approval and the companion amputee. Uh, the segment that's brown to the south is on the existing county CIP. Here's your existing residential three future lane use. And your proposed rez six future lane use.
Res six?
The proposed amendment is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies. And with that, we would recommend the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, uh, be approved and adopt by roll call vote. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the comp plan.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
The, um, improvements for the road, going up to Old Mill Road, um, that's done as an off-site improvement. Is there credits for that, or are they just doing it?
I believe it will be subject to mobility fee credits. Applicant can answer. Barble Hill, sixty-three, twenty-seven, Grand Boulevard, Newport, Richmond, three four six five two. This is a hundred and six unit, um, project, townhome project. Probably the first time I stood before you all and had a client that would take on a project of this magnitude. We are expanding to your ultimate section, which is a four-lane section with multi-use paths. Um, we already have all the way except for an easement that needs to come for a pond from the school board. Um, but your right of ways all just sitting there waiting for this project. Because there's only a hundred and six townhomes, it's a combination when the DA comes to you, um, 'cause there's a requirement for a DA, it's gonna be a combination of credits, and then the county will be putting up money to, uh, pay for the difference.
So how much are we expected to pay?
I do not have an estimate. Uh, maybe your county engineer does.
Is this coming before the project's built or after the project's built?
The road?
Yes.
It's gonna come online around the same time. We do not, we have not done the DA yet. Like I said, it's a pretty impressive improvement that we're taking on, um, this small project to improve your road.
It'll be our road.
Yes.
Can you, um...
Your road, county road.
Can we go to Google Earth in front of those schools for me? Cypress Creek High, Middleland High, um... These are all front-loaded?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, not my favorite. And I've let a lot of the folks that come in front of me know that I kinda like putting a little stake in the ground in, in, in the Trinity Odessa area, at least, in the fifty-six, fifty-four area, that I'm not gonna vote for any front-loaded townhomes. I mean, unless, unless you're, if you're doing a development and, and there's no way to get to the back on the edge or, or some part of it, but I just, I just can't take them anymore in, in that area. Y'all want them in your districts, but I just don't think they...
The school that are showing Cypress Creek.
Well, what I wanna show you here is really a frustration to me that, um, and I appreciate that they're working on the multi-use, but the school district has not even put in their sidewalk. And I just think we gotta make sure that when the schools are building their complexes, the sidewalks need to be built along with them.
So I had a great conversation with the new superintendent, and, um, you know, we all are in agreement that future schools, we need to make sure that we're taking care of these vital pedestrian resources.
Well, when are they coming in and fixing this one? Because that road's getting busy.
We didn't discuss existing, and I think this would be taken care of with...
This is in this...
This project plans on taking care of that issue.
You're building the school's sidewalk?
We are building a four-lane, your ultimate section of Old Pasco Road from the school, which is Sedgway, all past this project to Old Mill. And your four-lane cross-section includes the continuation of the sidewalks and multi-use path. I think it might even be a multi-use path on both sides.
Well, it'd be a nice of the school district, 'cause I'm pretty sure David can tell me if I'm wrong or not, that they're responsible for the infrastructure on their property, and that includes the sidewalk.
I don't think there's any disagreement at this point with this administration.
They, you know, we have a, they, they're get on us about the two-mile thing, the kids walking and us making it safe for their kids, but they need to make their campuses safe, so then when we get the sidewalk to their property, then once they get on the property, they can get into their school safely, I mean, or, or across it, so...
We would all concur on that too, but we're trying to help, help solve the problems that exist. I can tell you that the project at Old Mill and Old Pasco has a sidewalk improvement that they agreed to off-site down to the schools on the west side. The county engineer had some foresight when he wrote that condition with us on that project, and it basically says if somebody else comes along to construct the road, there's a cash out, a couple hundred thousand dollars, as I recall. So there will be money coming from that project towards this project, so it's, you know, it's just a cute, we're trying to put together projects and having them do what they can do, and as well as the county, to get some of these roads done for you.
Commissioner, I think it's, it's just a, it's a good, it's a good way to get these infrastructure projects done in, in, in parallel here with development. So you're, you're only messing with things one time, so, yeah, I think it's a pretty good approach.
You can go back to your presentation.
Madam Chair, just as we go a little further, if you look at where that picture is right now, look down right below, there's a road going up and down. They're not connecting, 'cause the neighborhood didn't want them to connect.
What, where, where are you speaking?
Yeah, Hadlock. Would that be Hadlock, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Yes.
So they didn't wanna connect there, but just like we just saw earlier, earlier today at Epperson, there's gonna be something probably coming from there or coming from the back.
Where's Hadlock? I don't know where that is.
Well, we, we, we...
It's up to the farm. Yep, it's back upstairs, right there.
Right, yeah, that road that goes east-west right to there.
That's Hadlock? That goes back to the baseball?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a dirt road, if I remember.
It is.
Right. So down the road, there may be some connections. But right now, if you don't set up where they could access Hadlock Road from one of those spots, or I don't...
We actually did that work.
You did that? Okay.
We did that work, Mr. Yes. So we spotted that issue as well, and we worked with your county engineer. And we have to accommodate all the, any of the traffic from anybody that develops around us, whether it's to our north or to our east. We have to bring them through ours. We had to do an extra improvement of where our road intersects with Old Pasco, our entrance. We had to do a larger entrance to accommodate that traffic. We had to put public access easements over our roads that can't be private, so that, so we did that work as well. We worked, did the work, that work as well for you. Because in your PDNE, Hadlock was the intersection in that PDNE, so we had to make this the intersection, because that's a private road, dirt road. Um, there's no ability to improve that road, because a bunch of people have interest, but we did do that work as well.
So that's that, um, road, that's that access you have on the east part... So that's that road, that's that access you have on the east part of your development?
The east, the north, and then we have a...
I see it to the north.
And then we have a improved access way, you know, onto Old Pasco to accommodate that future traffic coming through our project because Hadlock is, you can't use Hadlock because it's private and it's dirt. So we did that work as well. We, we've been working on this for, for a bit.
All right, so your east-west road that's going to go to connect Old Pasco is going to be able to suffice the things behind it.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, Commissioner.
And we, and the people who move there...
I got to know.
Can't complain that, oh, that road's continuing. I didn't know it was going to continue. And then whoever's getting to that property on the east side of them, yeah, they're going to come right down that road.
So there will be like stub outs in place to show something's going to connect.
Future road.
That's correct. We have to do a stub out to our east and a stub out to our north and as well as put public access easements over our road.
Okay.
So that's, so that's taken care of as well.
Okay, I did have a question. Do you guys have any questions? Oh, I know what it was because I see your traffic engineers is there. Question. And, and so this road getting widened is going to be able to handle this traffic fine?
Yes, Steve Henry-Lynson searches, yes, we did the traffic analysis for the project and yes, it will be able to handle the traffic.
Okay, question on what happened this morning because I know you were here. When, when you do traffic analysis, do you not look at future developments that are coming in or do you only look at what's there for the moment?
No, we, we do it a couple of different ways. So one, when we started, we have a methodology. So we'll, we'll look at one, what is the historical growth in the area? So in, in this case, we pulled counts, historical counts on Old Pasco Road, on fifty-two and on fifty-four. And so we look at the growth in the area and, and look at what that growth rate is. And if that growth rate is less than two percent, we'll use the minimum, which your code requires of a two percent growth. If it's higher than that, we use that. So we try to use the historical. In some instances, and like on Hudson where there, there wasn't much traffic, so even if we used a two percent growth, it wouldn't estimate what was really going to be there, we'll use actual traffic studies that have been done in the area and add that traffic to it. So it's a combination. It depends on the area and we look at, you know, what if that growth rate really is, is giving us what that future volume will be. And again, on this one also, what we do is we have a minimum of a six-year build out. Even though this project may build out in two years or three years, in our traffic study, we use a six-year build out to, again, to grow the traffic up even more than, than what we might see at the actual build out of the project. So it's, it's not one way to do it. We look, kind of look at the area and come up with what the best mechanism is to estimate what that future growth might be.
Interesting. Commissioner Jaeger.
Do you have a rendering of what, like where the stub outs are, are going to be? Like what that'll look like?
I think I've seen your MPUD item, correct?
Because I, I'll be honest, the only, my concern is, you know, we'll take, you know, Rangeland right now, like the developer didn't tell, tell the future residents that, you know, there was going to be a road there and now we have...
Oh, I don't think that's true. And I know the developer.
Oh, okay. Well, that's what I was told. Anyway, I just want to make sure that, like, the, the people buying in there have...
We can, we can add a condition, if you make it part of your motion, that that disclosure happens and I can add that to our condition.
I would like that.
You're at, you're at small scale.
I understand.
Amendment.
In the MPUD motion, assuming they proved the comp plan amendment. Thank you. Yes, I get all wrapped up in my MPUD stuff, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure, you know, moving forward when we look at these projects that we're thinking ahead.
Commissioner Mariano, did what he say match with what you were thinking? Because you said something different this morning.
Let me help you a little further. He doesn't know what's coming behind him. He doesn't know if there's four or five other developments and those, I don't think are calculated in if they're not approved, correct?
Correct. That's why we use a growth rate. That's why we look at historical growth.
But you're using two percent for historical growth?
Well, no, what we do is we, we, we pull the counts. The DOT has counts on every roadway. We pull the historical counts, in this case, again, it was Pasco Road, fifty-two, fifty-four. We look at that. If that growth, that historical growth rate is less than two percent, we use two percent. If it's more than two percent and we're seeing an area growing faster, we use that growth rate. So that's just the, in your code, it says you use the historical growth rate or two percent at a minimum. So that's what we use. And again, in some areas where because the existing traffic is so low, we may then use the actual traffic studies because the traffic is low and is not going to estimate what that future growth is.
Do you look at Bieber numbers or no?
Uh, we, we do not. We, we just look at the historical growth in the area is what we typically use.
Okay, that was my question.
Thanks.
So, so Madam Chair?
Public.
Excuse me, one second. Go ahead.
So, so as you, as you're hearing, they're not calculating those other things coming behind it, which is important to realize, that they don't factor that in.
Well, no, I think that's, we, we do. That's what the growth rate is supposed to do. The growth rate and what we do is we take the, the, the growth, the existing traffic. So we'll go out and do existing counts and then we grow it up to two percent or, or whatever that growth rate may, the historical growth rate in the area may be. It may be three percent, four percent, five percent.
But, but in that area, there may not be any development and then you've got a, you know, one thousand unit thing coming in down the street, but at two percent, you're not going to catch it.
Well, but, but, but when they come in, in the future, then they will have to do a traffic study to evaluate what their impact. So you're right, if there's a large project that happens to come in just down the street and it's a thousand units, you're correct. We, we may not capture that in our analysis, but when they come in to do their analysis, they will capture our traffic plus that growth. So, so it is, it, it's a cumulative...
Right.
Effect. We can't, you know, we, we don't have a crystal ball to figure out who's coming in.
Because lots of times developments may get approved, but they never, they don't happen.
Many, many do and that's why historically and just, you know, years and years ago, we would have to include every project that ever got built or ever got approved.
Or that got approved, not necessarily built.
And the problem was, many of those, you can go back and look at some of these now that still haven't built.
Yeah.
So that's when the county came up with the growth rate to look at historical, to try to come up with a better estimation of what the, the future traffic may be for these projects as opposed to adding in every approved project that there is.
Well, it'll be interesting to know, considering our fast growth rate, if that formula is the right formula for us today. Just curious.
Drive on fifty-four.
Um, okay, so...
Well, and actually, to be honest with you, we've, we just, I'm fit, you speak of fifty-four. We, we've just completed some, and a series of new counts out there. And in fact, we're seeing a decrease in traffic in the last five years on fifty-four, believe it or not. There's actually been a decrease in traffic and part of that is Rangeland's gone in, Ridge Road has gone in. And so we did counts before Rangeland and before Ridge and now we're seeing an actual decrease in traffic on fifty-four because of, now, not to say that that's not going to come back, but we are seeing based on historical volumes that we have done, we've done counts over the last twenty years on, on fifty-four and, and the last series because of those roads opening up, we have seen a decrease in traffic.
I, I was actually driving on it the other day in the afternoon and it was, I was like the only car on there and I, I was just shocked. It was shocking. In the middle of the afternoon on a weekday.
But when we're, we're doing new traffic since on fifty-four, we still add that growth rate to it, even though we see a decrease, we were still adding that growth rate to it.
All right, well, let me see if there's anyone that wants to speak to this project in the public against this project? Okay, we have one. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
No, no, not against. Anybody can speak.
Well, you are allowed to speak. Don't listen to, go on up.
Smala kon sena.
Again, Sarah Gonzalez, one, six, six, seven, seven Albright Road, Spring Hill. To feed on what they're talking about over here on Old Pasco and such, this is not working in Shady Hills Road. How do we know it's going to work with it out here is my question. So to feed on the same thing, we're experiencing the growth in our area. How do, if it's not working in our area, how's it going to work out here?
Well, they're getting a, they're getting a four lane road. We got to figure that out for Shady Hills one day.
Right, which is just crazy because our growth is almost as bad as theirs. So that's where I wanted to feed on with that this over here, Shady Hills is getting a lot of growth too and how can we know, even though they're getting a lot of growth and you're saying that, how do we know it's going to actually go that way? Because Shady Hills didn't go that way and I don't really need my whole three minutes, but just thought I would like to feed in on that.
We hear you guys.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Because over there, we've got four schools, four schools down Shady Hills. One of them has been since Shady Hills was paved, unpaved roads and they have done nothing to improve that road. There is still people parking on the side of that road miles down by Shady Hills Elementary. They just added development by Cruz Lake and Mary, Dr. Mary Giellis, but yet our roads are not improved. So how do we know this over here will also follow through when we were told the same thing? You know, so just to throw that in in the same aspect, we're all Pasco County, correct? Thank you for your time.
Thanks. All right, is there anyone else that wants to speak to this? See, oh, one more.
Nancy Hayeswood, three, four, one, one, oh, a nice place. Historic growth rate, when's that, nineteen fifty? I, maybe you need a future growth rate to bounce off of instead of the historic growth rate. Then I, I was listening to this and you've got eighteen acres and you want to put a hundred and six units on it? That's an awful lot. That's going from three per acre to six per acre. You're doubling it. This is a chance to start slowing down what's going on out here with your infrastructure and your natural resources. Maybe this is the place to start. Thank you all.
Thank you. I think that's the end of public comment. Come on up, Barbara.
And if I haven't said it in the record, I have no one on WebEx for this item.
Barbara Willhide again for the applicant.
We don't have a site plan either.
This road is ahead, Old Pasco Road is ahead. You had a route study somewhere along the line. You acquired a whole bunch of right of way, which was surprising when we looked at it for you, for the county, as to what was going on and had our engineers take a look at what your right of way is, what you needed for this road improvement. Like I say, the only thing you're missing is some property from the school board, but definitely ahead and that's why this project was able to come in and do this improvement for you. Density actually helps you do road improvements and this project is, it shows that because that's the way we're getting this project done. So, and it is townhomes, it's a single family attached versus detached, three versus six. So just wanted to add those perspectives. Thank you.
Okay, um...
Move approve. Second, with the condition to be added that they're going to...
The condition to be added will be in forty-six.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Roll call vote.
A roll call vote, right, ordinance, thank you.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Jaeger.
Aye.
Here. Yes, I hear. District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
Set effect.
Okay, next one. P forty.
Item P forty was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Keith Wiley, Director of Parks Recreation, National Resources Department. Back in March eleventh this year, the BCC gave the Parks Department direction to bring back the existing MST ordinance amended to be an all-inclusive ordinance. That's what you have today in front of you. I do have a quick recap history lesson and then just an overview of what the actual amended ordinance covers. So the modification basically covers, again, it's, the intent is to be all inclusive, so it's all operations, all programs, all functions, all routine, all capital maintenance, non-capital, improvements, equipment and salary. So that was the assignment back in March. That's what this ordinance would be able to do if approved today. And just a quick history lesson, current Parks Department budget is twenty-two million dollars. Back in FY twenty-two, we had a million dollars dedicated for what we call non-capital improvement projects. That's everything underneath fifty thousand dollars. Our existing need that I did not include in this presentation, which I did include some pictures because I think that's impactful, but the, just the existing facilities in the ground today, the need for capital maintenance is approximately eight million dollars per year. Future stuff, which I'll talk about later, which is those are new capital projects coming online, that anticipated O and M need is around five million dollars. And just to clarify, starting in FY twenty-six, why I think this is so important, I think this is my third presentation, by the way, so I could probably just do this with my eyes closed, but as a reminder, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't clearly articulate that starting in FY twenty-six, there is no reoccurring or defined capital maintenance funding for the Parks Department. The go bond, the general obligation money is pretty much either spent or already encumbered and that's why, you know, we've been so diligent in pursuing this, a solution to this issue. So this is just an overview real quick of everything that we currently have in the inventory. Most of you know this, so I won't bore you with it. The most important piece is back in twenty sixteen, the Parks Master Plan did not contemplate the capital maintenance or the O and M needs. It was both mostly focused on deferred maintenance and the new, new capital growth needs, which we addressed through the park impact fee increase several years ago. So what are some things that can, that can be actually funded through capital maintenance? So these are all your parks and maintenance renovations, buildings, fields, boat ramps, playgrounds. I made actually a short list while I was waiting, just to kind of not give a little more detail on this. So we have an aging lighting inventory at all of our parks, thirty-plus years, anticipated our approximate cost to replace that to LED, total infrastructure sixteen to twenty million dollars. Now that's the entire inventory, that's over time. We have three major facilities on the east side of Pasco County, San Pasco, San Antonio, Berks, that are in major, major need of dugout, backstop, fencing, field renovations. These facilities, you know, take along, you know, they take a beating and they need the money to actually, to be recouped. We have a hundred and thirty-six plus athletic fields that require re-sodding. Grass does, athletic turf does need to be replaced. It's not artificial, obviously it has a life expectancy of about probably eight to nine years. With our use, probably less than that, so a re-sodding effort needs to actually be budgeted for, which is anywhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per field. We have two artificial turf fields that are pretty much ending their life. That's at West of Chapel District Park. That's about anywhere between a million and a half to two million dollars to replace those. In addition to all that fun stuff, we have increases just like everyone else in the organization, increases to utilities, goods and services that have slowly over the years has been eating into our operations. So, you know, if we can't pay the utility bill, then we turn around and take it from some other program, which is reducing level of service. This is more pretty much a recap just for anyone that hasn't seen this presentation before. And then something I'll get to in a minute after these pictures is we have about a hundred and ten million dollars of new park projects that are coming online that, that will, you know, this maintenance piece will also need to be addressed. So that's, that's pretty important. These are just some pictures, some of the field conditions, again...
I saw Mitchell, I drove by Mitchell, I saw the dirt.
Yeah. So that, yeah, that backstop's about to, about to come down. What's happening with a lot of our outdoor courts is after a while, settling, slabs kind of break, you got to go in and do the entire redo, which is, you would think would be not, you know, not too expensive, but it's like a half a million dollars.
So if that, if that backstop goes down, you're not playing softball.
Well, we're not.
I mean, you, you can't play there.
Correct. So, again, not to...
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, not to beat up, but this is, I think, well, I feel like the message I want to get across, and again, the purpose for today is to just, you know, review the amended ordinance, but these are the projects that we know are basically coming online. We have about a hundred and two, depending on what happens with connected cities, you We have about 102, depending on what happens with connected cities, you know, just put that as a question mark. You have 102-plus million dollars worth of projects, O&amp;M need of $5 to $8 million. So the need's real. I know that I'm not the only department, Parks is not the only department suffering this, but I know that we hear from the citizens a lot, I know you hear from the citizens a lot, on our level of service, and we take it on my team very seriously. So we're just, we're trying to kind of figure this, this out. At this point, I'd like to bring up the Director O&amp;B, talk about the finances. She is much smarter than me when it comes to that, so.
All right, hi, Amy Farrell, Budget Director with Pasco County's Office of Management and Budget. So the scenarios that we're going to present to you today are going to look awfully familiar to what we presented in March because they are, in fact, the same. But we just wanted to give a refresh, a reminder, it is too soon in the budget process for us to have any updated refined numbers. Just a reminder, we get preliminary taxable assessed value from the property appraiser June 1st, so we're not quite there yet. So we wanted to just keep running with the same taxable assessed value scenarios that we have already shown you, so there'd be a little less confusion than trying to predict what we think might happen in a month. So we have three different scenarios for you. One is if we just fund capital maintenance. The second one is just current parks operating budget. And then the third one is if it were a combination of those two. And then the middle column shows you what the program revenue would be, and then that final column shows you five-year aggregate growth based off of how just that fund would grow, assuming we didn't change the millage rate that we adopted, and then just some growth projections on taxable assessed value. And so it's important to remember that currently, the only thing that's being funded for parks is that middle row scenario for operations. That capital maintenance piece would be an increase in that level of funding. So if we were to keep a net neutral methodology for our taxpayers moving forward, we would have to find if the board desired to commit $8 million, we would have to find somewhere else to offset that money.
Maybe, I couldn't, not sure. So on the slide, it says cities contribute to the MST. Can you explain that?
So if the cities were to say, yes, we want to be taxed as part of this MST, this is how that the numbers would shake out, assuming current year taxable assessed value. The next slide shows you if the cities did not raise their hand and say, yes, we want to be taxed as well, what would that look like? To generate the same amount of revenue, what would that look like? The last time we met, Commissioner Mariano, you did ask us to come back with a fee schedule until we've got, so there's two main things that made it kind of challenging for us to be able to bring that back now in May. The first thing is we don't really know what those taxable assessed values are going to shake out to be next month. And then the second main contributing factor is what level of funding does the board want to put towards this MST, meaning what is that millage rate? Because those two numbers would tell us how much the cities would have contributed, and then how much would we try to make up and absorb through some kind of fee schedule and assessment. So in short, it would have been a shot in the dark and probably not helpful.
Do any of the cities have soccer fields, baseball complexes, softball complexes?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think we talked about this briefly last time. So it's hit or miss. The scale, the number that they have is not sufficient to address the need countywide, yes.
I know, but like, I don't think, I don't think Newport Ritchie has a recreational complex.
No, but, so like, Dade City has, you know, several fields. City of Zephyr Hills has several, and I mean several, you know, a handful.
Not like original parks.
No, absolutely.
They don't fund their own recreational...
Not to that scale, correct.
Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, one of the things I was concerned about, the cities and the contributions of what happens if we're going to do all the contribution for 91% of the population covering all the fields, I don't think it's right. I think they should contribute. But one comforting thing I got from, let's say, the Port Ritchie and Newport Ritchie, their CRAs, if we reduce the millage down and we're using this MSTU instead, they're not getting revenue they would have got. That they're going to go dump it in the CRA, and it comes into this. So that was like, I was trying to think of that, Mike, as we were talking the other day. I couldn't remember what that argument was, it just came to me a little while ago, but that's the one piece where I got, even if the cities don't contribute in, it's going to still help us in a way where not as much is going to go into CRA.
Okay, so what do you need from us today?
All right, well, so next steps in our timeline, so at our upcoming budget workshop, that's when we'll start to talk about millage rate and get some kind of idea of where you all sit where that's concerned. We will have preliminary taxable assessed values, and then we can roll, we can roll this MSTU through the regular trim process. But today, it's approval of the updated ordinance that Keith has presented.
Okay. Do we need to take public comment?
We do.
Does anyone have any more questions for Keith? Okay, we're going to take public comment on this, this one. Anyone wish to speak?
Madam Chair, we do not have, I don't have anyone signed up, but if someone could go right on that.
The Parks guy.
Yeah, the Parks guy. This is not why I was here, I promise. I had no idea this was coming up. Michael Poltoric, 9152 Kent Road, Wesley Chapel, 33545, in the great state of Florida. I just want to say, I have coached at Wesley Chapel District Park for many years now, flag football, baseball, softball. My children now play travel, and the reason is the Wesley Chapel District Park cannot fulfill near its capacity of what it draws. The Wesley Chapel Athletic Association has an amazing, amazing group of volunteers and such great talent, and they want to pour into those boys and girls. And I will tell you, there is no reason why Wesley Chapel District Park and Pasco County doesn't have a national Little League World Series champion at this point. We have so much talent here. Let me tell you how much talent we have in the Wesley Chapel area. Right now, just from that park, we have nine baseball-only travel teams that have left, merely in nine U, 10 U, and 11 U, because there's not enough park space to be able to really push these players to the next level. You have that much talent, you have so much talent here, a good portion of the players come from Hillsboro County because they want to come here and play for these coaches in this program. They come from Lutes, they come from Land of Lakes. You've got great coaches and a tremendous amount of talent. I love it when we go to the softball tournaments, the travel tournaments at Starkey Ranch. That complex is fantastic. I mean, absolutely fantastic. If you had something like that here in the Wesley Chapel area, you would actually have national championship athletic programs here because you have such a pool of coaches, talent, and player. As Commissioner Waitman said in the workshop, your average age in this county is getting younger and younger, and younger and younger, and they all have kids, and they come here because of a beautiful Pasco County, a healthier environment, things like our sports, our parks, our rec, getting the kids off of technology and out there actually doing this. And Wesley Chapel, we have one full-size softball field. We have one full-size baseball field, three medium-sized baseball fields. There's so many players and so much talent, there's no choice, but they spin off and go out to Berks Park and create more and more travel teams. We cannot pour enough money in this county into the Parks and Rec program, especially in Central County. It is probably the biggest Wesley Chapel issue at hand right now. It's having a place for our youth.
Pay attention to this process as we go through our budget, and we need, we need your voices.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just piggyback on, so River Ridge plays Wesley Chapel Wednesday, or Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday night, best two out of three, and either River Ridge or Wesley Chapel will be going to States for baseball. So that's super exciting.
Absolutely. You have three of the best baseball programs in west-central Florida, right here in the backyard.
And we have the same with soccer as well.
Well, it is.
And not enough, not enough.
Absolutely. But, and this is a shout-out honestly, for all of the coaching and the staff in the area, Wesley Chapel High, Wiregrass Ranch, and Cypress Creek. You have amazing baseball and softball there. You should be very, very proud of it. It all comes out of Wesley Chapel District Park.
We need to take care of our fields. We need to fund our maintenance, so.
Absolutely.
I voted for the MST, but we didn't get it. We got, well, we have an MST, but it's zero funded, right? We have zero funds for maintenance.
Let's fix that.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I have no one signed up for WebEx on this item, and I did not have anyone signed up.
Okay, come on up, because that is your, you're right.
Nancy Hayeswood, 34110, a nice place. I'm sorry to bother you so much, but you're talking my talk today. I want to say that Mike is absolutely right that we need that, but I don't want you to forget the ELAP program. We also need to make sure that that stays healthy, too. We have bicyclist and those type of low-key things and hiking that also needs to be supported. So I'm all over this also. Please give it a thumbs up.
All right, Mike, there's no one else. Mike, you want to say something?
Yeah, actually, if you could put...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Let me go, Madam Chair, let me go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The perfect segue. So under my committee reports, I was going to talk about Gunner Hogland from Hudson.
Oh, how funny, he's from Hudson?
From Hudson. So Gunner was on a AAU team that won the state championship. We gave him a resolution. The team then went on to win the national championship as well from Hudson. That was just sent to me, my wife got that last night. That was yesterday, I think, yesterday's game or something, where there's a Pasco County resident playing professional baseball right now, just got called up to play, that was his first game, first inning, nine pitchers, and they got a strikeout already.
Oh, that's awesome.
So that's how important, and you think about all the traveling teams, these guys traveled everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, they had some great stories, just like we've seen before.
Boy, you've been here a long time, 2008?
Yeah.
Florida Young Guns, I remember them. I remember the Young Guns.
That was my fault, yeah, then.
Let me look who's on here.
Yeah, these kids here are phenomenal, and I was like, I thought just wanted to highlight the sports. But literally, the Parks Department, and I always had a routine with my kids, and I'm sure you guys carry the same thing, if your kids stay busy, as we look at this coming through, I was at a meeting over in Timbrosch the other day, retirement community, real simple place, not a high-income area, but nice homes, and all small, like two bedrooms, whatever. But I asked them about how they felt with the paving assessment, and they really didn't even know it was on there. I'm going to tell you, we need to, with the great work that Keith, Kathy, the whole team, Christina, they're all doing out there, people want that quality of life. And they don't want it down the road when you can get it, right? That's why they pass those GO bonds. This may be a time, as we come up here, to actually look at that in the next month or so, to let's make a big stand now.
$25 million a year.
Maybe feel an impact. And then if you've got to throw that back once they're built and now just more maintenance, so be it. But it's a time where these people are crying for it. And if you want good, as we say, executive housing, people with high-quality incomes that want to come in with the demographics, they're going to want, they're going to want to be in the right place for their kids.
Let me tell you, who keeps calling me?
That's why this is so important.
You know who keeps calling me and saying, where's the baseball field, Starkey? Fred McGriff. He lives in Starkey Ranch. He calls me all the time, where is the baseball field complex? Because he's very upset that they got softball in Starkey. And he has promised that he will throw out the first pitch when you inaugurate that field, which is in, it's in Bexley. So who's got Bexley? That's you. So, but we can't build it if we don't have the money to take care of it. Why build it if we can't take care of it? And I was a coach for 25 years, so is my husband. I have a Division I soccer player, played soccer at the Air Force Academy. I get it. I was married to a professional baseball player. Okay, we're going to take the vote. Is this a roll call vote?
Can I add something?
Oh, yeah, you get to go, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. So, yeah, so as Amy alluded, today, you're voting on the ordinance. This will add the operations portion to the park budget to your MSTU. Currently, as you pointed out, the MSTU is for maintenance only, it is set at zero mills. In June, we will have the discussion, we will need to have the discussion more in-depth. We'll have taxable assessed values, it'll be a lot easier to have a more realistic discussion on what you were going to set that millage at, and if you want a reduction in your general operating millage, what that needs to be. It's important we have that conversation because to be, you have to unanimously approve, based on the current interpretation of rules here, that you have to be unanimous in setting that millage. If you are not unanimous, it goes away. So it's very important both for our staff...
So is that baseball field?
As they push forward in planning the budget, and we march towards September when we have public input, that there is alignment on that. So we will be having that conversation more in-depth and probably more detailed than you care to have, but it needs to happen. So I'm just letting you know that.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no one, I'll take a motion. I got a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call.
A roll call, I'm sorry, ordinance.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. P41.
Item P41 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 19th, 2025.
It is a continuance, but go ahead and read the record. Excuse me?
Mr. Steinsteiner should give you the, the notice. We'll let him, we'll let them do the continuances and then we'll do the procedures.
Okay. Item P41 is PDE 250114. This is McCharles Pito's Plant Development and Growth Department. Item P41 is a development agreement to modify it. The request is to continue the item to the May 20, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
All right, this is advertised as a continuance. You can go to the next one?
No. You need a motion.
Oh, I have to take a motion.
Move approve.
Move to continue time certain, please.
All in favor? Aye. Next.
Item P42, this item was incorrectly advertised for today, so the project will be re-advertised.
Yes. Item P42 is PD 257651. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Tall Timbers MPUD by Extreme Team 41 LLC. There are ongoing conversations with this MPUD, so we're requesting for a continuance with date uncertain, and it will nonetheless be re-advertized.
Okay, motion?
Move continues, date uncertain.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just for a quick conversation, that's the talk we're trying to put in the field, and I hope they're having a conversation with staff.
Yes, that they are.
Right.
P44.
P43?
Oh, P43.
Item P43 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on August 21st, 2024. The item was advertised for the October 8th, 2024, BCC meeting, which was canceled due to Hurricane Milton. The item then appeared on the November 12th, 2024, BCC meeting, where it was continued to the February 11th, 2025, BCC meeting, where it was continued to the March 11th, 2025, BCC meeting, where it was continued to to date.
Item P43 is PD 257738. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Evans County Line 80 MPUD Master Plan Unit Development by Evans Properties, Inc. This is a request to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Take a motion?
Move to continue.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, next one.
Item P44. Item P44 was published in Tampa Bay Times on March 19th, 2025.
Item P44 is the companion to the development agreement continuance for Riverstone or Renner MPUD. This one is a substantial modification to the MPUD, but we're requesting a continuance of the May 20, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM at Newport Ritchie.
And this one, you know, I'm really keeping an eye on this if someone's here, because this one has the multi-use path that's supposed to be going across Mr. Gads' house, right? And that is very important to the people in this county, that that multi-use path is built. So I am not going to let that slide, huh?
Move to continue time certain.
Yeah. Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, the rezoning procedures, there are two rezoning agendas, regular consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission is recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission is recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an app, application is insufficient for this foredilig action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found in the Board's Land Development Code for rezonings. Madam Clark, would you like to swear the public in?
I certainly would. If you are here to speak and the remainder of the items, could you please stand and raise your right hand? Okay. Uh, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you, you may be seated. Item P forty-five?
Yep.
Item P forty-five was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P forty-five is PD twenty-five zero one eight three. This is a Development of Regional Impact Amendment, DRI Amendment, in the name of Beacon Woods, DRI MPUD Development of Regional Impact, Master Plan Unit Development by HCA Health Services of Florida Incorporated. It's a modification to the DRI Development Order and MAP-H of the master plan to remove some western parcels from this DRI MPUD and include them in the new HCA Banet Point MPUD to be used for hospital medical office uses and to update the DRI expiration date per previous request. Uh, this follows, uh, MPUD and comprehensive plan actions that happened at the last Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie. The recommendation comes through to approve the DRI amendment request, subject to the attached resolutions and the attachments, uh, found therein.
Um, I, I see Mr. Hobby's here, and I know we had discussions on this. Um, and, Karen Administrator, I forgot to send you those videos of the parking, but I need to speak to Mr. Clark about the parking. So I guess I need to pull this off the consent. And I think the other one's coming off the consent, so we have no consent.
Consent is over.
Okay, I'm gonna, who do I send this video to?
That one or that one?
Um, is it Tony over there? No, can, it's Tony's here.
Yeah, no, that's.
Okay, Tony, I gotta find your, let's see here. Um. And that's an email, Tony, Tony, what's your last name again? Okay, so T S T, there it is, okay. I'm sending you this video. Hopefully it's not too big.
Madam Chair, that was listed in, in my book as District one, but that's District five, if I'm mistaken.
Yes, and this is where my doctor's office, that I just went to, and I've talked to Mr. Clark about this.
Was it yours?
And my issue with this, and I'm, I'm gonna vote for it, but I, I need you to come up, Clark. Um, is that I don't think they've resolved the parking issue. And I, I don't know if anyone else goes up there, but my husband and I go up, I don't remember when I got vertigo. I have to go up there and get checked, and there's, they're parking, I showed it to you, I hope he gets it. They're parking on the grass, they're parking on, they go up over the curbs, they're parking in the street. So maybe over by the hospital there's parking, but over by the med, okay, watch my video here. Oh, it's a picture? Okay, just picture that everywhere. Um, I think the video, the videos may be, um, too big. So I don't, I don't know how to resolve this.
Madam Chair, I might, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA, one oh nine Old Broad Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn. Uh, I, I have seen the pictures, and I understand we have a parking issue, and I've been in contact with the CEO of the hospital about fixing it. We have a, an internal compliance issue at the hospital with some of the people that do parking there and with staff. But my understanding from, uh, speaking with Sally, who's the CEO, is they're trying, as we speak, to change it. They have plenty, they have about three hundred more spots on the campus than the code requires. So what's happening is their own staff and guests are parking in places that they're not permitted to park. And what, from what I'm seeing there, I'm guessing, they're not even permitted to park there by the code. So we may have a bit of a code compliance issue as well, but that, they're aware of it and they're trying to fix it. But as you all are undoubtedly aware, the, the agenda item that we're talking about today really has nothing to do with parking. All we're doing is getting the property out of the DRI that it was previously in before you all approved the MPUD a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, but I know we talked and, um, I think they need some kind of sticker system on the car for the employees. And then if they're parking, where the customers are supposed to be, but, but something needs to get resolved, and we just can't add anymore to that hospital.
No, I, I understand, and Commissioner, I mean, I, I know you well enough that if we don't get it resolved at some point, I imagine somebody from code enforcement may start, you know, paying a visit to the site.
Yeah, they'll make a lot of, well, we don't, I, I don't know who tickets, is that the sheriff's office or the code, the tickets when they're up on the gra, up on the curbs?
I think it's a basic code enforcement issue, as best I know, but yes.
Madam Chair, yeah, I'm a frequent flyer there. Uh, I've, I've been there many, many, many times with my family in the past couple of years. Uh, got a great list with Sally Seymour, she's a fantastic CEO, she was down attorney, she's been up here for a couple of years now. Does a phenomenal job, she's aware of the problem. They've got about four hundred and fifty interns, they've got a bunch of employees. The brand-new building you just put out front, which is absolutely phenomenal, has plenty of parking there right there.
Over there, yeah.
When, when it's difficult, if you're actually over there, and you gotta go, go through the emergency room if it's late at night or coming out. Uh, but there's a big central part of that area that's empty for parking.
Right.
Where they're not parking, so she's got places to put her employees, she's working on it, it's gonna take a little bit of time, and then you get other people that just go out there. But even if you're in the back, if you valet, the valets take your car, you don't have to even park it yourself, they'll go. Cause it's still even crowded to get to where you'd have to go, so that valet is gonna be a key component. But she is working on it, I have full faith in them, and it's got nothing to do with what we're doing with this part of it, but they are working on it, and she's a great CEO, so she, we're the right things.
You don't wanna go to your doctor's appointment and spend forty-five minutes trying to find a spot, and if you don't have four-wheel drive, you're out of luck. You're gonna have to Uber there.
But if you valet, if you valet there from the front, you have no problem, they'll take your car, they don't even charge you. It's a volunteer valet that comes in there, so for those who can't find a spot right away, you can valet it, they'll take care of it, and you walk to your doctor.
Sally did say to, to suggest that to you, Commissioner, when you're there, but it, that, that still doesn't resolve people parking in places where they shouldn't. And Sally's aware of it though, and they're working on it.
What's she working on?
Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, does anyone just want to speak against this item that was on consent?
Madam Chair, I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, P forty-six.
Item P forty-six was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
I think the only reason that this came off a consent was to add an additional condition.
Yes.
I would propose, uh, we've got some standard language that we, that we use in some of the MPUDs. A disclosure statement shall be included in all sales contracts or other disclosure materials for residential sales within the MPUD regarding the east-west road. And it will be, that it will be interconnected to the parcel to the east.
Is there a north south one too?
The one to the south is an emergency access, we can.
Oh, the one to, eventually it may not be if they develop that road.
Right, so it's.
Yeah, so it's gotta be.
Well, we have, it's emergency access to Havoc only, um, but then that language is fine, Mr. Cunningham.
I think you, you could put, potentially it could connect.
Well, so we had a neighborhood meeting, and the gentleman that lives to the south, that owns half of that road, was very happy that it was emergency access only, I actually had to, I, we had to send him.
For now.
We had to send him the language. That road is, that road is a private road owned by a whole bunch of people. The chances of that actually ever being anything, I guess unless they're all bought out, which I guess could occur, but, um, I don't know what you guys want to do, so, I mean, it was important to him.
But, but the concern, I think, is, is if, if, if it, if you open it, or if it gets open for them, not for to, not to go down Havoc, but, but if they come in, it's the impact to your project that the commissioner was concerned about, the interconnection.
Do our emergency access?
Well, if, if it was opened to the people to the south to use the public road, that would impact your townhomes.
Right, but it's not, because we have a condition that says it can only be emergency access.
I don't want that condition, for now.
You can't change that.
Yes, we can.
If you want us to write a condition that says, cause we've written them before, it goes against what the gentleman was told, but it's up to you all.
Not now, but.
He was, he owns half of that road, I mean, it's easement over half of his property, so.
How about if he wants it changed, it can be changed? Cause one day, his property.
I'm okay with what he.
Will probably get developed. Then we will shut ourselves in the flood.
We have conditions that say, and I, and it's, I can think of the one family, uh, trail, I think it was, it has a condition that says, if it's ever proved a standard condition, then we, then it has to be an access and not just emergency access. There is that language that exists, if that's how you want that to read, and we can make those changes to the documents.
Well, we're really, we're really only talking about a disclosure statement, so if you, you wanna say interconnected to the parcel to the east, and may at some point in the future be interconnected to the south.
But I have to come back for a substantial amendment to make, to change that from emergency, emergency access. I mean, if it's, if there's a condition that says it's emergency access only, coming back for two public hearings to change that, so, um.
And they've probably been telling the people that's emergency, aren't they?
I can tell you that he reviewed our language.
I, I, the, the customer on the street has an agreement, I think we need to stand by it, to change it without that customer knowing. I think you'd be wrong at this point.
Well, I think, I was trying to make it where the customer is in the driver's seat. If, when, if and when his property gets developed, he, he may very well want that.
Well, guess what? We actually have this language.
Oh.
Thank you, Christie. It's condition twenty-three, and then that comes to Mr. County Attorney, who's gonna add his language. But it does say, condition twenty-three, the last sentence, notwithstanding if, when the property to the south of the MPUD boundary is redeveloped, emergency access may be converted to a functional access for, if approved by the county.
Perfect.
So.
Perfect.
Look at that.
Well done, Christie.
That's what we need in all of these, that's gotta be the standard emergency. Okay.
Public comment?
Public comment, anyone want to speak against this item that was on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
Move approval.
With the access condition stated by the county attorney?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you much. We finished, we finished all the Rs this morning, right?
We did not, you have R thirty-seven.
We have R thirty-seven.
Tourism.
R thirty-seven. Oh, Adam's been hanging around all day. And we were gonna make Mike Morris, uh, stay and write, report on tourism activity in the legislature.
Yes, ma'am, sorry, sorry about that.
Oh, is this not a sign?
I was excited about the MST talk with, uh, with Parks. Yeah, not a problem. Adam Thomas, Tourism Director, Florida Sports Coast for Pasco County. Uh, as they're getting the, the presentation, uh, pulled up, this is just a informational presentation only, and this is, um, all your twenty twenty-four fiscal year data, uh, from the visitor economy and what we've been doing over the past year and the results of, of that. So, uh, over the past year, the Florida Sports Coast, uh, team has seen remarkable growth. We hosted major youth amateur sporting events, conducted engagement, social media tours, and offered exceptional, exceptional venues for small market conference, enhancing our profile and boosting the economy. Our achievements are an attribute to the valued support of community and industry partners across Pasco County. Together, we have transformed our destination into a hub of activity and opportunity. I like to celebrate these accomplishments and look forward to continuing the success and collaboration of spirit that makes this all possible through this board and the Course Development Council. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move really quickly today, um, I, but I, I do wanna stop on this slide real fast, because this is our new tourism lexicon. This is how we're talking to people, this is our thirty-second elevator pitch, this is how we're communicating to people. This is what I use, um, at every conference and trade show that, um, that, uh, that I get the privilege to speaking, uh, at. So, and, and summary, we're just a thirty-minute drive from Tampa International Airport. Uh, Florida Sports Coast is a place that welcomes a unique mix of waterfront towns, rural attractions, and natural environments. From thrilling activities like ziplining and skydiving, to more peaceful pursuits like scalloping, diving, and hot air balloon rides, Florida Sports Coast invites you to play the game your way. So it's a call to action, all right? That call to action is to play the game your way. So we're launching a new marketing campaign called Discover What Moves You. And there you can discover what moves you with the experiences that we have to offer when we're telling our story to the, uh, to the consumer marketplace. So in twenty twenty-four, no short of winning some awards, we, uh, we won two marketing awards, one, uh, one tele award and one communicator award for the Golf Is Your Playground video. So this is a video that we used last year into this year, it's an evergreen video that really highlights the, all the many activities that you can do on our coastline. From scalloping to fishing to boating to, uh, paddle boarding, canoeing, anything that you could do on the coastline, zip line, I'm sorry, uh, wakeboarding, uh, anything that you can do on the coast, and we won two awards for that. Uh, we won a state award for the, uh, uh, sports events, uh, the Tampa Bay Christmas Invitational and the twenty twenty-four Florida's Best Sports Events for Small Market. This is a, this is a, an award that we won from the Florida Sports Foundation, it's a state award. Um, this, uh, I'd like to recognize Consuelo Sanchez for her outstanding achievements in being awarded for the twenty twenty-four Florida Professional, Professional of the Year for Sports Tourism. She was also the Persons of the Year for Compete Diversity for Sports ETA. And she was also the twenty twenty-four, uh, Persons of the Year for the Women's and International Trade for the Tampa Bay Market. So she brought home the trifecta of awards for Pasco County for twenty twenty-four, but I also like to recognize Kayla Glazebrook as being one of the finalists for the twenty twenty-four Florida's, Florida's Emerging Leaders of Florida Sports Tourism.
Wow.
So we talk a lot about, about trade shows and really telling our community story, and really showcasing what we do to the world and what we have to the world. And this is just, uh, a couple of the, uh, the shows that, that we went to over the past year. Uh, ITB is the largest travel and trade show in the world that gives us the opportunity to showcase our destination on the international stage, in particularly to our German market, uh, visitors. Florida Huddle is another premier trade show that our tour operators and wholesalers from around the globe showcase the vast offerings of the Sunshine State, and that's what we're doing there. We're partnering with these tour operators to really get to, uh, get the consumer marketplace to know who we are, what we are, and where we are. IPW, this is the leading inbound travel trade show connecting US travel exhibitors with travel buyers and media, uh, media trade that promotes their project from, products from around the world. And last but not least, uh, last month, Commissioner, our Chairman Starkey and I and, and Consuelo Sanchez had the opportunity to go to, uh, Spain and, and attend the Sports and Events Europe, a B-to-B focused, workshop-focused group on sports, travel, and meetings. Fam tours, this is a big part of, uh, uh, our initiative in our sales and our PR strategies. Um, these are the four big fam tours that we normally do on an annual basis. We have a German operator fam tour that we brought in seven tour operators from the central European market, so Germany, uh, Germany, Switzerland, and Austria. Scalloping fam tour, we brought in, um, about six influencers, travel influencers from around the country, um, that are freelance writers, also writing for publications like Garden and Gun, uh, Southern Living. These types of publications, we just can't afford to buy into, because they're anywhere from thirty to forty-five thousand dollars a pop. Um, we just don't have the funding to do that, so we invite these freelancers in to actually tell our community's story and tell our activities while they're in market. Our domestic trade fam tour, this was a co-op opportunity highlighting, um, all there is in the Tampa Bay area, from Florida Sports Coast to, uh, to Tampa, uh, up to, to Crystal River, and it was all, everything outdoor emerging, uh, experiences. So international sports tourism is a, is a big, is a big initiative of ours, and when we went to Spain, uh, we met with these six groups that are coming to Saddle Brook, uh, this month on May sixteenth for the, uh, the Express Conference International. These are all, uh, qualified sports events owners that are looking for, for Florida. Currently, they're not in the United States, and we wanna be the first destination they come to for, for, uh, for their, their clients.
It's so exciting, that, that meeting is great.
Yes.
What is the world breaking?
Breakdancing.
What is it?
Breakdancing.
Wait, and did you see the other one on there, jump rope?
Yes.
Wait, there's another one, what's the one that's calist, no, ju, what's the one that was, is it calisthenics or?
It's calisthenics, yes, yes, ma'am, it's calisthenics, so it's ju, it's jumping jacks, it's burpees, it's these. We, we go after unconventional tourism, so if underwater basket weaving was a, was a sport, we would, we would go after it. So these are just some of the, uh, the conferences that we're, or the, the, the events that we're bringing into, uh, into Saddle Brook, into Wesley Chapel, into Pasco County over the next, uh, couple of weeks to, to really showcase not only Saddle Brook, but the entire county of what we have to offer. Marketing campaigns, these are, um, One Fun Day video co-ops that we did with Visit Florida. We highlighted Date City, Zephyr Hills, Wesley Chapel, and Newport Ritchie, highlighting what you can do there on one fun day. So there's lodging, there's attractions, there's eateries, there's entertainment involved. So all these things make up Wesley Chapel, Newport Ritchie, Date City, and Zephyr Hills, and you can find them. These are also evergreen videos that live not only on, on our YouTube channel, but also on Visit Florida's YouTube channel as well. Our marketing campaigns, Expedia marketing campaigns, our marketing campaigns are getting a little bit more sophisticated, right? When we're going out to market, we know who we're going to attract, who we're going to target. It's targeting the right person on the right, on the right media to get the right return on investment, which we're gonna talk about in, in just a second. But you can see the impressions that we're generating, the clicks, and the hotel revenue, the hotel room nights, which we weren't tracking before on our marketing campaigns. We are now tracking through our, our partners with Adara, with, um, with Epsilon, with, um, with Zartico, down to St. Germain, and Adara, so I just wanna go back here for a second. This is a, this is a Hopper, this is an international marketing campaign with Hopper. This is an online travel agency that we are, that we are partnering with, um, to, to actually redeem bookings and hotel rooms. So even though it's only a, a two hundred and four roomtail, room night, uh, generation, that's only for a couple of weeks since, uh, since the campaign had, had launched. And here's where the rubber meets the road on the marketing. And here's where the rubber meets the road on the marketing campaigns on our return on ad spend. So, you can see for the month, the, the first or the second quarter of the year, our, our campaign with Expedia and our campaign with Adara. So, every dollar that we spend in January gives us a return on ad spend of $17.44 back in market. It's the same with February, March, and the total, $16.91 back on the, the revenue that's generated. And the revenue that's generated is also the revenue, the hotel revenue that's generated through these, through these campaigns on the bookings. I just talked about how we measured. So, here's some of the creative that, that, that we kind of push out. So, this is Newport Ritchie, obviously, that gets broken down into our, our brand-new newsletter. So, we, we started this newsletter back up and reinstated it a few months ago. As soon as we went out, subscribers have grown, have grown from under 500 to over 1,000. So, these are opt-in subscribers that are going to our website, looking at the opt-in newsletter or, or requesting a visitor's guide. These are qualified people that are trying to find out more about our destination so they can come back or, or come here for the first time. Our social media is, is going gangbusters. I just want to highlight real fast our Instagram feed. About 18 months ago, we were, we were less than 9,000 followers on our, on our Instagram. And I'm happy to, to announce right now, we're over 14,500 followers on our Instagram and counting. This is largely in part to our giveaways, our seasonal attractions, and our, our marketing efforts from, from our marketing team. So, here's just some, some, some big tournaments that, that we held at Wiregrass Grand Sports Campus. We had the Florida Senior Games. We had the U.S. Wheelchair Rugby National Championship that just took place, place last week. We had the North American Chinese Basketball Association Championship. This was a four-year project. They were supposed to come in right when the pandemic hit, right when COVID hit. They ended up canceling and came back last year in 2024. And this opens a, a greater, bigger door for the Asian market. So, now we get a chance to talk to the Asian Federation for other sports and other, other teams to come into, into, into Pasco County. Here are some of our venues that we kind of just highlight, just moving along real quick. And we were asked to, to show what the sports campus is because this is your biggest investment from a board perspective, this is your greatest asset from a tourism perspective, what, what the sports campus generated in 2024. So, we went from nine events in 2023 to 68 events in 2024. We went from 11,000 room nights in 2023 to, to close to 22,000 room nights in 2024.
Thank goodness we made that switch.
You made that switch. It was, it was, it was a, a well-needed switch because now we're seeing the return on our investments of, of that facility.
Commissioner Jaeger didn't go through that, but we switched the management over there.
Oh, I knew that.
The county took it over. Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And so, all of Pasco County's sports events, we hosted over 122 events, generating close to 36,000 room nights for 2024, generating an economic impact over $36 million. And 3,135 teams, not individuals, these are teams that came to Pasco County last year. Here is an overview of the sports highlights. Again, North Chinese Basketball Championship, the Christmas Bay, Tampa Bay Christmas Invitational. This, the Tampa Bay Christmas Invitational is something to, to really watch. I mean, you're talking about 3,200 room nights that are coming in for, for a week-long period, creating over $3 million of economic impact. But these are all Division One, Division Two high school, college-ready high school girls that are coming from across the country at the last week of December. So, a great time of the year, and it's just really a, a good event to, to come and watch. So, the impact of Pasco County tourism for, for, for 2024, you can see that we just, we welcomed a little over 1.4 million visitors into, into Pasco County, generating close to, close to about 10 and a half thousand jobs that supported a little over $300 million in, in total wages and salaries. And the sales tax and taxes that were supported here and local taxes supported through tourism-related initiatives are over $78 million. So, our direct spending that happened in 2024 was over 750, 700, 675,000, I'm sorry, $1 million in market. And you can see where the categories of spend on accommodations, restaurant, grocery, shopping, entertainment, transportation, and other categories as well, where, where they're spending their money in market. Our occupancy, a little flat year-over-year. Our rate is stabilized. Anything above 100 right now is great for us. When I first came on board back in 2017, our ADR was $87 over the course of the year. Average daily rate. Yes, ma'am. And that is our revenue per available room. So, every room that we're, we're generating, we're generating about $70.40 per room, per day. Economic impact, again, going back five years, and you can see the, the trend line of, of where we're at today. I can tell you right now, we are outpacing all of this for 2025. So, we're, we're looking to have another historic year in terms of visitors, room nights, direct spend, and economic impact. With that, Madam Chair?
Do you recall the name of the new tennis coach that has now joined Zephyr Hills? It's Serena or Venus' coach.
So, it's Morata Glue. It's, it's the, it's, it's a Morata Glue Academy at Sarah Vandenberg Tennis Facility. So, they just did a whole rebranding. Don't ask me what Morata Glue's first name is. I can barely pronounce his last name. But this is going to be a game changer for us in Zephyr Hills because they're now going to be bringing tennis athletes from around the world to Zephyr Hills for training.
Yes, a big deal.
It's bigger than IMG Tennis Academy.
When I told my tennis friends the, the name, they couldn't believe it. You know, that they, they're down in Hillsborough, Pinellas. And it's great stuff, great stuff. Any questions for Adam? Commissioner Mariana?
Yeah, Adam, I had to ask you a couple of questions this morning. I thought we were going to see some, some data presentations too, but.
So, we sent that slide that you requested over to Colleen. I don't know if, Tony, did you get the slide from Colleen? No?
All right. Why are you checking that, Tony? Put those other slides up there.
And then, Tony, I sent you a picture. I sent you two, but I want the, the one picture. That doesn't say Wikipedia.
I've talked before about pictures like Bora Bora, Four Seasons.
Yeah, my daughter stayed in those.
So, Keith loves this. I love it. Adam loves it too. But try to imagine the second lake at Sun West where you take and you put in those.
Yes, like cabins on the water.
Cabs in the water. You want to talk about like trying to get attention to Pasco County? You put those things out there? I don't, I don't want anyone else to like it.
That's lovely right there.
There's a cove area, and there's like, so there's the, there's a little, you can make them fly overnight accommodations. I think you generate tremendous amount of money. There's enough space around where even you can put some container home-type things right along the canal that's right there. That could be a structure that's in the lake as well to kind of highlight stuff. You could even put that, actually, in the other part of Sun West as well. Now, I want you to think, if you're at Sun West with the, the second bathroom we built, there's a little cove area. So, picture you're looking at that little cove area. Try to imagine a concrete structure, stage area, which you probably put a cover over, et cetera. I want to get some professional look at it. And you kind of develop an amphitheater.
Love it.
There's an actual amphitheater right there, right now. Now, you take that around, there's already, there's already a walkway like you see right there with outlets to go through. You could make this such a concert venue. And I tell you, I just came from the country of thunder down at, at the Raymond James. And it wasn't the Raymond James Stadium like I thought it was going to be. It was out in a field. And that field was not well sodded in the sense of it was dry. Dust was flying like everywhere. But people sat out there and waited and waited for the music to play. Toward the end of the night, it got good. The great thing is about this park is if you go back to those slides again, please, I want to highlight where the peninsula is. There's an awesome little place that actually the guy who's run the shrimp and crab festival for 10 years drew. He says, "I'd love to have a pavilion out along that peninsula area, which could be great for weddings."
It's the.
And just other smaller events.
That picture.
Go right, yeah, so go right there. So, this, so this, let's kind of look at the cove area there. So, if you look at the concrete area with the rocks around it, then you look at the other side. It's kind of like mirrors the peninsula part. You can actually set yourself up to be on one side of it there, on the other side looking out, all over the nature on the far side of the lake. Gorgeous setting. Christina and Keith and I were out there looking at it. And it wouldn't take a lot of money to do that. It wouldn't take a ton of money to do this yet, though musically, you want to make sure you get it right. And I've got a couple of people, professionals, they want to come take a look at it. I've actually got a wedding planner in St. Augustine that wants to come down and take a look at it for us.
There's a guy that lives in Starkey Ranch who does music for a lot of the professional.
If you could hook him up, we'd love, love to bring him up to get his.
He'll be at Low Cash on the Sunday night of Memorial Weekend at our, at our market. He does the sound every year.
Okay. So, I mean, the things we can do out there for tourism and, Adam, so that slide that was, was the calculations one?
Correct.
All right. So, the calculations, then, I don't, I don't see it, but it did get sent out?
It, yes, sir, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, okay. So, pull up the slide. So, when I was on TDC, and Commissioner Stark, you'll probably go through it now. So, take a look at the, this, this is the data from the tourist zones. So, look at, look at northwest Pasco, $33,000. Go down below at the southwest, $346,000.
Yep.
Go to the southwest quadrant, you're at $304,000. And northeast Pasco, where Nancy wants to keep it quiet, is at $25,000. Try to imagine if we put that facility up there for the weddings, for the concerts, for the yurts, that would just drive, I think, international attention.
Here's my challenge for you, Commissioner Mariana.
Go ahead.
And because I mentioned this to a few other people, because, you know, my son is in real estate development. And they actually received some packages from Pasco County that are, of groups that are out shopping some big projects up in their Greenwich, Connecticut office. But what turns them away is the conditions of US 19 and the dilapidation and, and the, just, it's a mess. And so, I think if we want to invest money up there, we have to clean up US 19. It's, it, it's third world.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, Commissioner Stark, I've been saying for a long, long time, and you've seen me get ordinances passed about the panhandling going on, that what goes on there drives the economy down. We don't have good hotels up there. We're going to take a moment, looking at converting.
You've got a lot of code violations up there.
Well, I'll tell you, your, your bigger problem comes where the demographics go. When US 19 and everything came along, you built a lot of two-bedroom, two-bans, the GM retirees, the Chrysler retirees, Ford retirees, all come down, they built these two-bedroom things. And what did you have to move in after that? We've got to, we've got to promote what we have on our coast and the assets we've got first. That will elevate your demographics up.
Well, it's just that you got to get the money, people to invest in it. And when they, when they, they, shoot, I even had some folks in from big money wanting to do workforce housing, and they won't go north of 54.
Okay.
They won't go north of, won't go north of Trouble Creek.
So, think back to when we had NDP Lacrosse playing up at the Wesley Chapel District Park. Where were all the hotel nights? Down south in Tampa. We got very little benefit. When Gordy Zierin built his hockey place up there, it elevated the game. When we built our sports ranch, elevated the game. Now, you get more hotels than we've had before. You have to have the attractors coming in here. I'm telling you, as this place is now, and, and staff, and this board, and I want to thank you all, what we have done up at Sun West right now, that second trail around that lake, the trail around it. You've got an asset, there's nothing else like it in the world. If we get that Canal Dredge with Sun West with boats coming in, and you can put three quarters mile of boat docks all the way down where people can come to a beach, dock your thing, have a good time, stay overnight in the thing, go to a wakeboard park, which Germans love that stuff, that's where we got the idea from. I mean, this thing here could elevate the whole region on the northwest. And that $33,000 number, if that gets up to a reasonable number, you will make things. But you got to put the attractors in. We're that close right now to get these things in. And we're not talking about big money make it happen. Right now, we, we put the big investments in. The rest of it's going to be easy, but the attraction of those things, I, I think is going to blow tourism up on the west side. And that will lead to your better things as well. But you got to have hotels. I can't have hotels that'll, I can't have hotels that dilapidated where I got homeless people, drug addict people living in there, going through, taking up space. I got to get the good stuff in there, but I got to have a reason why they're going to come in. They're looking for the stuff. And this is like part of it coming up there.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
No, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, we're on, we're not on you, we're on him. Okay. I had a picture to show. No, not that one. No, I said not the, that one. So, so when we were in Spain, the number one attraction in the area was this hike called the Caminito del Rey. They did it in the rain. I was too terrified to go do it in the rain, so I canceled my ticket that day and I went on another day. But that is the hike there. That is a trail that is hammered into the side of that gorge. And, yeah, I did never, I never did look over the edge, to tell you the truth. And I, I, you have to hike down for like an hour to get to the drop off, the start of that. You have to wear a hard hat, there's other pictures. But I, I asked, if I get scared, can I, can I quit? There's, there, you're looking at some of the pictures, yeah.
No, I'd be like, no way.
Well, if you look at that architecture, look, it says the most dangerous path in the world. But that was before they hammered the new one in. And, and you can see most of these people are like hugging the rock, and that would be me on the edge. But they don't tell you that when you get to the suspension bridge, that's like two and a half hours into the hike. And so, if you chicken out, you have to turn around, go back all by yourself, all through that. So, I, I made it through. I did hold the guide's hand walking across that bridge. But this is the number one tourist attraction in that, in that area. 1,500 people a day are doing this hike. They did not plan on that.
We could do that around the second lake in Sun West, right?
Yeah. That's the Caminito del Rey. Okay. Any more questions for Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, great job. Gosh, I'm just so glad that hopefully you get to keep your money. Hopefully, the legislature doesn't mess that up, right? Okay, I think we're done with all of that, and we're on to Commissioner Oakley.
Okay. A few Adams, I think I have some pictures, so I guess I should start with.
I am afraid of heights. My hands were sweaty working.
This is one where addicts actually go out and visit with this. I was not able to go myself.
What is that?
This is a drone.
Oh, is that the drone doc?
That's the drone. And they have a, I believe they have the video working on this.
Very cool. Is this in Land O' Lakes?
It's at Mini Peelock.
Oh, this is the one at Mini Peelock? That's getting the holiday folks.
I guess that was it. Then we had a meeting down at the Rotary down in Zephyr Hills. We met down in the library there in Zephyr Hills and talked to the Noon Rotary for Zephyr Hills and had very good conversation. Had quite a few, probably half a dozen or more, Billy Poe and some of the city officials were there. Steve Spinnon was there with us. So, we talked about a lot of different things around Zephyr Hills that affected both county and Zephyr Hills. Next, we have, what we have here? Oh, this is where yesterday I went out to Cypress Creek Junior High School. And when we left that, from here yesterday, we left here, they said there was 100 kids signed up for me to speak to. When we got there, he said, "Oh, there's 180 kids coming to this new field." I don't think it was that exciting, but those kids were something else. They, they were very exciting. And strange enough, don't mention Trump in the room because I did, and they went nuts. They were so happy and cheerful. You just can't, I just never saw that reaction from 12, 13-year-old kids.
Wow.
In there, so, but it, it was a very nice event. Explained to them about the commissioners and, and just the way we do things in the county and what it takes to vote, and that we only hire two people. And, and our actual employment number is 3,912 people that work for the county, which Mr. Cabala takes care of all of those except for two. But a lot of good things we talked about with those kids, and they thoroughly enjoyed being there. So, we talked to them from 1:30 to about 2:30 or quarter to 3:00. And it was just kind of nonstop when we went in there, but very good day, so. All right, that's all I have.
Commissioner Whiting?
Thank you. We, no updates for committee reports, been quiet on those. But we had last Thursday a very, a very nice National Day of Prayer here at the Tour Courthouse. And want to thank all of the staff up to set up chairs and help PA systems and, and make it, make the event the success that it is, it is every year. And just a nice time. And then I have to put a picture of Chuck up here for you, Commissioner Stark.
Oh, there you go. Is that your man?
For, for maybe, for maybe next year, the speaker.
Can we afford him? Are you going to treat us, treat us?
He's probably cheaper than T-Bone. Maybe. And so, yeah.
Where does he live? I mean, if we do this in February, maybe he'll really come.
I found his website a couple, he's still doing speaking engagements at eighty-something years old, and so, he's still literally out there pushing down the moon.
Kicking it down.
Yeah, so, and also with, uh, the hospital, um, Advent Health, Meadow Point's ER opened up at fifty-four and Meadow Point Boulevard, so, since it's Hospital Week, congratulations to Advent on, uh, another, another emergency station, so, that's all I have.
Commissioner Yeager.
Okay. Can I have hi?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Almost there.
Alright.
Oh, Adam left, I don't think he saw Chuck.
Okay, so, um, Paula and Pam went to the Tunnel of Towers, where they had a home dedication to Sergeant Hannan, and I don't know if you guys have ever been out to the Do Good Village, but it's absolutely amazing, it's a great ceremony, it's, it's very moving. Okay, next slide. This was our National Day of Prayer at the Newport Chee Government Center, it was great, they had music, and, um, I was really moved by it. Okay, next slide. This was a ribbon-cutting for Grease's Food Pantry, that was yesterday, so this, I believe, is their eleventh pantry that they start, so they help feed, um, senior citizens, so, and this was in a, um, senior living home, and, um, Kathy, I had gotten with you to see if their, their rents are going up, um, they started at like six-forty, and now some of them are at a thousand dollars a month, so Kathy's looking in to see if, um, we can help fill the gap for them, so, Jack was with me, um, on that, and I believe that's all I have.
Very good, I love that, that group, they're, they do wonderful stuff.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mariana.
Alright, um, and again, I, I was, actually, those might show a picture of Tunnel to Towers, that was to the dedication, it was amazing. The, the turnout just was incredible, the whole street was like twelve houses down full, uh, the presentations were great, um, great people, just, uh, very appreciative to what's going on, what, that, that development in just outside of Linda Lakes is just such a great thing to testimony for our veterans, and Tunnel to Towers is just a first-class organization that did it well. Um, so I want to just talk briefly, oh, there's a, alright, we'll go to the pictures, uh, that's the tri-county workshop we had, if you would go back.
Yeah.
Uh, so the tri-county workshop, I tell you, I think that people should know that all the county commissioners from Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas all get together quarterly, or, let's say biannually, quarterly now, almost quarterly?
Yeah, at least, I would say probably two or three times a year, for sure.
Yeah, and I tell you, the meetings we have, the conversations, I think everyone will agree, that it's great dialogue, it's great input, you kind of get it where, you're not getting like two people that sit on the commission, but you're getting all five commissioners, you get a much broader perspective.
Yeah.
And I think that helps get, get better discussions, to find out where we need to go, especially as we talk about MPOs and merging, and, and how to best serve the region with all the great things we do. So, I'm glad, I'm, I want to thank you, Mike, for working with the other two administrators who were great as well, to, to bring us all together so we can have those conversations, it definitely, definitely helps the region.
Yeah, I, I think we all, we all agreed, the administrators agreed, that, uh, that this, this particular workshop was a roundtable, was, was very, very good, we were able to start getting into some media issues, and discuss things of regional importance.
Like US forty-one and fifty-four.
I, I gotta have to tip my hat to you there, Commissioner Stark. So, so, but, but we just said, we had real-time discussion on legislative issues, and so I thought that, um, it, it really, it really hit the mark, and I was glad I was here in Pasco County, too.
Yes, yeah.
I think it, I think it worked out great, I don't know what's going on with the sound system there, but, other than that, I think they loved their Florida sports coast, and they got a little bump with the Starchy Seltzer. Um, we should thank Adam for all, I mean, we gave him a nice little bag of stuff. Commissioner Oakley went home with a whole six-pack.
Yeah.
Seven.
Actually got seven. But I'm, but I'm down to five now.
That's terrible.
I, I was happy to just get my Starchy Seltzer, Starchy Seltzer, I loved it, I was good with that.
I did go home with two of those, I traded, I traded half the year.
Uh, can I tell you the next picture? And Steps to Recovery did their groundbreaking.
Oh, okay.
So, as you know, I went to DC trying to get them an extension, we talked about doing CWGR money for them, the complexities, I'll tell you, after talking with them yesterday, talking to the engineers, talking to the contract who started, that's only started three weeks ago, this whole lot is cleared.
I know, all those other trees are gone.
I know, but it's got drained, we're gonna put more, more in.
Alright.
So, the drainage is, is all set up, right now, as much as I wanted to add the third floor, they would have to like start, and with the construction already done, it's too late for that. But this land right back to that picture is to the backside, that they're actually working with the people there, we might be able to help them, if they can go get the land, maybe work on getting the land and building something right next to it, so they can still help them with the services right there, and take care of more veterans, they're gonna take care of thirty-two now, but I, I'm sure we can at least double that number coming up. So, it's a little bit different plan from what I talked about, but, uh, I still think helping is great. Um, Marilyn is right in the middle there with the Bay Shirt, she's the one who started this whole thing years ago, as she was retiring, uh, she's up to seven homes, and now with this new complex, all very excited, they get volunteers from like Timber Greens, they do a great job for her, and, uh, everybody in the community's really, really behind it, excited about what's gonna happen out there. As you see, Marcy grabbed the shovel there.
Yeah, that's great.
Kathy's right there, too, and Paula was probably taking the picture at one point. But it was a great groundbreaking, very, very, very encouraging that, no, we're gonna help our veterans with this project, and that opioid money we put in-
Yeah.
Put them over the top to make the project happen, otherwise-
And we'll get some trees for them from the trust fund.
Yes, so, it was, it was a great, great thing for this commission to make that happen, and it's gonna help that area quite a bit, and all our veterans. Uh, is that it for pictures?
So, you can go.
Okay, alright, so I want to just go back to, we saw today, um, at Efferson, Elon Road, administrative decisions.
Elon.
Yeah, Elon.
Okay, Elon, sorry.
It's okay.
There's a neck over there, though. Uh, so, I, I think it's important, we, and I know we talked about doing this a few months back, Corella Drive was an example where a decision was made, and it was changed by staff. Uh, we got a lot of grief right now in Beacon Woods East, where they got a development coming in, where they're supposed to go on the road, staff changed it, and now we're dealing repercussion after repercussion that keeps on coming, matter of fact, David, maybe you get the language from me, but, they've maybe taken this one road that's supposed to go in straight in for development, short little run, that they decided to go on, and now they're doing it-
Who's they?
The developer.
Okay.
So now they're going on two side roads, in a neighborhood with their dump trucks waiting to go in.
I thought we fixed that.
Well, this is a new one, I mean, it's the same, same developer, just on the other side of the road now, instead of being the long way through Cora Club, was like a two-mile jaunt from, from Little Road, or Five A Road, Hudson Ave, coming in, now they're going to a short road off of Hudson Ave, they're supposed to go right in, and they're going into the neighborhoods now.
No.
So we gotta go get, get some no-truck signs out there so they can't go there, but it's, it's brutal what's going on.
Do we need to start identifying that, that construction roads-
That says they'll use these, these ways, or-
We generally-
Stop them down or something?
Back in like, I think it was oh-six or oh-one, whatever it might have been, we put conditions in, they were doing a different construction route. Administratively, it was changed, and these people are suffering for it, so I want to make sure that we're going through this and we get this thing done fast, because I don't want to see any more changes done, because we have public hearings, and you get the, all that public input, things are done, when you get, you know, planners, et cetera, in a room, they don't know all that went on, they don't get to hear it from the people and what was agreed to at that time, those changes that were put in are important, they need to stay there unless you really re-public, have another set of public hearings, and I, I, I want to get it back into where the public have more control, we've got more control, so we don't have to deal with these issues that we can put our hands up to say there's nothing I can do. So I want to make sure we get that back as quick as we can, and David, is there something we can do about that, I want to talk about that now? So the two side roads that they go on-
What development is this?
This is at Beacon Woods East at Aqua Clara, so right now they're on, the main road's supposed to be Aqua Clara, they're using the two side roads for the dump trucks, what kind of a no-truck sign or whatever I could put up there where they can't go on those roads?
Yeah, um, so, David Allen, Assistant County Administrator Development Services again, um, the, 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 the project is just a little bit north off of Hudson Avenue, um, uh, the, the actual development is Beacon Park, and there's a small little section of Aqua Clara that connects Hudson Avenue to the proposed project site, that's the main road that, that the developer's been using to access the site in and out. The, the construction traffic there really started picking up when they, they switched from an alternate location that they were using further to the north, that was actually a little bit more dangerous, because they had to go through a lot, a lot more of a residential area to get to the site. Right now, what, what the challenge is, is some of the things that the developer's doing is, is using the side streets, um, to turn trucks around and those types of things, as opposed to bringing them on-site, and so what I'd like to do is at, at least initially reach out to the developer to see what we could do to just limit access to just in and out of the site, um, without having to disrupt, um, the community. Part of the other challenge, too, also for the board's benefit, is that, um, some of the other challenges we've been having, particularly with the developers, they've been queuing up their trucks and just parking, waiting to get on the site, and as a result of that, they've been blocking folks from being able to get in and out, and we've been coordinating with the Pasco Sheriff's Office to ticket those, um, drivers whenever that, that, that situation occurs. Typically, in the early morning, um, usually by mid-morning, that situation kind of clears out, but that's what I would propose to do before we look at just kind of closing off the road, um, from the construction traffic, because I think we would have to make, provide some additional language to allow for other types of construction to be able to go in and out, because, so for example, if someone were to have a roof done within the neighborhood, they would have to have the trucks be able to go in to make deliveries of roof materials and those types of things, so, that's what I propose that we do, is we reach out to the developer to see what we could do to, to get an update of their schedule, and, and really limit their, their-
Who is the developer?
Um, it's Southern, um, Investment Properties, I believe, they're out of Jacksonville.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, yeah, we gotta watch that.
Alright, so, and, and actually, David, well, you're right there, so I got this email from Denise Anderson about doing a code sweep in Gulfside Estates, I look at the area, this is an area that, it happens to be right off nineteen, it's on the west side, and is your first, like, on Long Nineteen, it's pretty high, it goes to an area that's a lot deeper right now, um, I'm understanding we're not doing, we weren't doing sweeps, and I see we're doing sweeps. I want to say this, as far as in my district, if we're gonna do a sweep, I want to know about it ahead of time. We've done it before over, in certain areas where we're trying to work on different things, so whatever, but, I don't know how you guys feel, but I think if I'm gonna do a, a sweep in my district, I want to know, I can't get what I want to get done, and as Commissioner Stark, you just mentioned earlier, you know, I gotta work on the, their, how the look of nineteen, I got panhandlers out there, I've got ordinances in place that work very well in Lee County, I don't want these, the thing of like worried about a lawsuit coming up, if I've got a safety ordinance that works, I want to implement it, I want to keep it implemented, I don't want people out there just panhandling, I want people to know that they can't just give money to those people either. It is a blight, the biggest blight is going on up there. Uh, I want to go work on the areas that we know, and there's plenty of them in my district, up and down the area, we've got homeless camps, we brought out a deputy from the sheriff's office, a corporal, to come in, work with our team, to go do that. That's what I want my focus to be in my district. I don't want this sweep on some neighborhood that's poor-
I'll take this one.
... recovery from a flood, whatever, she can take my sweeps, I don't care.
I will.
Let every commissioner do what, what they want for the district, but I want to treat my district with the focus I want, and frankly, with the code budget that we've got, I want my people to focus on what I think needs to be done as my commissioner, because I'm gonna tell you, the blight that she just mentioned, and the up and down, is something I gotta deal with, and I hear about all the time. That's my problem, it's not whether you're gonna take this neighborhood that nobody else is gonna see, and they're, like I said, they were probably hit with the storm pretty heavy, so they've got some RVs out there, I guess what? That's what's gonna happen.
No, I know, you've touched on several, several, um, issues there, Commissioner Mariano, so, first and foremost, yes, I wholeheartedly agree, and I'll talk to our code, code department head, to make sure that all of the commissioners are notified whenever we do a sweep in, in, within the district, because I think it's appropriate that you have that advance notice regarding that. Um, in regards to, um, the focus within the districts, I believe, um, Denise Anderson has been meeting with each of you to get a sense of what that looks like, and that's part of that, um, is to get your feedback, to understand what you're looking for within your district, so that we can focus on those specific items, as well as kind of the broader county perspective, um, in terms of what should the code department be focusing on, on a broader perspective, and, you know, some of the feedback that we've already heard is just really kind of focusing on the, the main corridors, and the main areas where we have, um, a lot of visibility with the public, so, north-south corridors of forty-one, nineteen, um, east-west corridors of fifty-four, fifty-two, um, to really have those as the kind of focal points of the code enforcement, because that's kind of our gateway into our county, and those are the areas that we want to focus on as well.
So, the way I understood this discussion was supposed to go, what's important to you, what do you want to see in your district?
Mm-hmm.
So my answer was, I want to deal with the homeless, the homeless and panhandling, and then after that, more homeless and panhandling. That's my focus.
Okay.
That's what I want to ta, take a look at, that's what we gotta go deal with, at least from my area, and I, and I'm not, and I think every commissioner should be able to say, here's what I want to see happen, and if that means they're gonna change their district, so be it, the way you have it all lined up.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna tell you, I see panhandlers everywhere now, they're more prevalent now because they know they're not being picked up, they know they're not being pressured, and they're in the middle of right-of-ways, or in safety-
We can't pick them up.
Dangerous issues.
We can't pick them up.
But you can get them out of the right-of-
And again, it-
If they're in the right-of-
But we don't have a panhandling ordinance.
You have a safety right-of-way ordinance.
But that's, but I think that's being challenged, you have to listen to him.
So, for one county to be challenged, you get sixty-seven, Lee County's not challenged, they're the ones we copied. I don't want to worry about the fear of being challenged, I want to go deal with what we have, enforce the laws we put in place, for the reason we put in place.
And that's a board decision, but, the version of the ordinance that was challenged in Saint John's, I believe, is the Lee County ordinance, they copied it, too. So you have that same exposure of litigation, we can defend that litigation, but, you got, you know, we may, we may have resources tied up in, in doing that defense. It's a business decision for the, for the board about whether or not they want to continue, continue on that path, um, but if, but if we keep calling it a panhandling ordinance, we will more likely lose that litigation.
I have trouble with the panhandling, but I want to enforce it through the, the right-of, right-of, uh, the safety right-of-way ordinance, so I may use that term for what the problem is, but it's the, it's the ordinance of the safety that I'm looking at.
So if I may add, Commissioner Mariano, board, you have been heard, that's why David and Denise wanted to sit with you individually, discuss what, what are the top issues that you see in your district, because our county is diverse, we have more codes and issues than we do necessarily code enforcement officers or resources to enforce everything, and I've, I've had con, various conversations with various board members on, on this topic. We've also looked at things that are of general county concern, right, uh, look at it like it's, it's a room in a house, right, there's, there's common areas maybe where we, we want to see things straightened up, and then there's areas in, in the rooms of the house that, that need to be cleaned up, it's kind of the, kind of the analogy that we can use on that. Um, and so we're, we're looking at that data, we're trying to allocate our resources appropriately, you've, you've been heard on that, you know, we're also taking some steps, I've had some conversations with Commissioner Waitman and others on, on how do we look at homelessness, right, that is part of our strategic plan, and, uh, I think we're having some ideas that we're, we're vetting here over the next, over the next couple of months, that hopefully may address panhandlers, may address the homeless issues that you're seeing so prevalent in your district and that are cropping up in other districts as well.
So, I, I just want to assure you that you have been heard, and that we will be bringing things back to you, and hopefully we'll, we'll find that they, they suit the needs of our citizens and you and your districts and your constituents.
And one thing about, as far as the appearance of 19 as well, Commissioner Starky, one of the things I like that staff's doing right now, is they're working on the tree mitigation ordinance, where we can actually allow these people, and I want to make sure we set this thing up, that we set it up where it's not just a reimbursable thing, or they can like put a bill and get paid right away, but I want to make sure that we can help those businesses up and down 19, without having to meet the full code, but if they want to dress it up with, make a good landscaping out there...
But we're doing that now, if you drive...
I know, I know, that's what I'm saying, they're doing a good job.
I got a lot of people complying now in my district.
And, and I tell you, and we've got the money to make it apply, and that can help that corridor, as well as other corridors too.
I say redevelopment too, making those storefronts look nicer.
Yeah, yep.
The one thing I want to touch on code is that I did a ride along with Denise, it was like an hour and a half, and we came up with a, a plan. So, it was very, it was very helpful, and she was amazing to work with, and I'm really excited to see the outcome of that. So, a lot of moving parts to it, it's going to be a huge job, but we're going to do it.
I, I am curious, if you don't mind me jumping in on your, on your issue there...
A moment.
Is how that neighborhood was selected. We, you know, I drive my district all the time, and when I see something, a neighborhood going down, it, you know, it gets noticed in my office, but we also get a lot of calls. And, and so, it's just more efficient for them, since they're reactive, not proactive, that if there's an area that has a lot of issues, they can go in and do the sweep, and then they don't have to just look at the house to the left and look to the right, but they can take care of a larger area. So, I find them very cost-effective, and, you know, they go in with warnings, they don't go in with citations. So, it, it really helps some of the neighborhoods. If you don't, we have found, you know, because I have Holliday, if you don't go in periodically and remind folks of what the rules are, things could go downhill really quickly. And so, I am very grateful that you do the sweeps, and, and so, I just, I know my, my constituents, they think we're not doing enough.
Who's that?
I hear it all the time, we don't care about Holliday, you're not in here enough. So, and I'll talk a little bit about that in my commissioner items, but you're, you know...
But again, so you listen to your constituents, you listen to yours, you guys listen to yours, I'm listening to mine, I'm telling you what I'm hearing. And it's been going on for a long time, there's ways to improve it, that's why we've done what we've done. But again, if we're going to focus, I mean, and we've improved a lot of the neighborhoods, but I want to focus on what the biggest problems are first, I worry about other things later.
That's such a hard problem to fix sadly, I don't know what your answer is.
There's going to be a lot of, you know, a lot of opportunities coming up with CBGDR money to try to help these people, steps recovery is helping people, so opioid money's helping people, but at the same time, let the commissioner of the district decide where they're going to put the resources.
Agreed.
It takes a lot of energy to go do those sweeps, and that's just one neighborhood, I still got 300 other ones.
Well, they get it done in a day or two. They get a lot done in a day or two. Go, I, okay.
As, as Mr. Cobblewell said, we'll, we'll continue to work with you, and again, homelessness is, is strategic plan priority, and we'll continue to put a lot of...
And Denise had a lot of great ideas about that too, I'm super impressed with her so far, so.
I think she'll be great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you're doing a phenomenal job. Absolutely phenomenal, thank you.
And actually Denise brought a great item, an idea to how to deal with something with BCS, so I thought her idea was very good, it has to do with who's in charge of what. Okay, so, are you done?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Cobblewell.
So, reading the room, I don't know, I was originally planning to have Ralph come up and just give a quick recap of where we are, if board's interested in that, if not, I can certainly pass, so I'll defer to the board, I just know we're getting like...
I know what's going on.
Yeah, I do too, I've had two conversations with our lobbyists, but if others haven't...
I think it's good to hear a little bit anyway.
Okay, well, okay, come on up Ralph, real quick.
Ralph, you have three minutes.
The high level, we know live local passed unanimously, but we think the opt-out is still in, that's the most important thing. And that'll be decided within the tax package? Do I have that right? Okay.
Good afternoon, Ralph Lehrer, our government affairs officer. So, moving ahead, the legislature did not finish, but on Friday night, they extended, so they'll go back in next week. They extended till midnight, or 11:59 on June 6th. We'll take up appropriations issues, the implementation bill and taxation bill, as well as a rural communities bill. So, what you need to know going forward, where we stand, the taxation bill that the House passed out contains the following problematic issues that we'll have to hope go away. Tourism development tax, the bill provides revenues for used and counties for any public purpose, rather than being limited to current authorized uses for TDT. It would also do away with the tourism development councils, it would dissolve them as of December 31st, 2025. With the avalorum tax, and which are the property taxes, the bill removes current law requirements pertaining to the opt-out portion of affordable housing that passed last year in the tax bill. It also, unless otherwise exempted, all property in Florida is subject to avalorum tax. The bill, the bill modifies exemptions for charitable use of property tax for affordable housing in this. So, those are problematic issues that what we're being told will not probably end up in the final tax bill, but we do not know. That's part of the negotiation going forward. Again, this was the House proposal, not the Senate proposal. As far as the budget's concerned, where do we stand there with our four ask? The East Pasco Emergency Shelter, we asked $20 million, it's currently on the Senate side for $500,000, we're going to hope to get that back up, a little bit more, House does not have anything at this time. Trinity Boulevard, the ask was for 2.5, Senate has 2.5, House has 1.25. The Curly Road, safer routes to schools, the ask was for 1.5, Senate has 1.5, House has 750, so we still have to work on that one. The Seepine neighborhood, currently, the ask was for $5,823, 526. Currently, the House nor the Senate has anything in there. Hopefully, we can get something in with the sprinkle pot at the end. We've been working on the appropriations chairs regarding that. And then there's two other issues that could come to Pasco County that are in the, in the appropriations currently. Fire station number four, the ask was for $7 million, Senate doesn't have anything in there, but the House has $100,000 currently on that. And then there was a connector roadway to a regional research area, the ask was for $9 million, Senate has $9 million in there, House has zero. So, that's where we are going into...
So...
I'm listening to the beep, I got beep.
I think that's where they call the hook.
So, that's where we are going into the special, or the extended session.
What'd you say about the road?
So, they, they had an ask in there for $9 million.
This was...
Connector roadway over by Moffett.
Okay.
Senate has it in there, $9 million, House does not. So, that's where we are, going into what they'll be addressing during the extension.
Next week.
And then I put out an email on Monday, shows you all the bills that passed that will impact the county, there's about 20 that we'll, we'll have to deal with, including live local, platting bill, land use bill.
And I read David's summation of the issues we have.
He didn't really get that one.
Yeah. On the live local, since this is a public meeting, I can say what I just told a, a group that was in my office, right?
Sure.
Yeah, you're an engineer working on a live local, no appointments with me, you're a lawyer working on live local, no appointments with me, you're a land, you're clearing land, nope, no appointments with me, you're not going to get any appointments with me if you're working on a live local project. That's, that was my, that's how I'm approaching things. You can tell them whatever you want.
I enjoy well going into the office and giving them the what for. Right there at the dinner table. And then that's, that's my approach.
All right. Okay, which one of you goes next? Okay, county attorney.
This is late in the day to do this, but I'll just mention it, and then we can revisit it at another meeting. I'm becoming increasingly concerned, as you heard at public comment today, with the powers that CDDs think they can wield, after you've established them, and we're not, through no fault of, of the teams, that we're not, we have not thought about what happens when the CDD, when a developer comes in and segments their property into multiple CDDs, what the relationship between those CDDs are. While it is true that they're public roads, if they've used tax-free financing, if they're CDD two roads, they're not CDD one roads, and there is some argument that they think they can privatize the roads from the other residents. And when planning approves the projects, they don't look at it that way, they look at a holistic network of local roads serving all of the subdivisions. So, it may, and unfortunately, this is another one of those things with, where the legislature has said, you have the authority to establish them, but you can't make any conditions on it, it's what the state charter says. So, you've got the choice of either not establishing a CDD, or we may think about beefing up the land development code to deal with these issues that seem to be bubbling up, that are CDD-only issues.
Can we put conditions on the CDD?
No, that's what I just said. The legislature's, basically has said the state charter is, because back in the 90s when this started, we would throw in conditions on CDDs, usually about whether or not they were going to use potable water or, or other things like that. You can enter into a near-local agreement with a CDD once they're established, which might behoove us, because the developer is in control of them then. But what is happening is, once the developer is no longer in charge of the CDD, and they have elections, they're elected officials, and they want to be, they think they've come to the same level as you all did.
Okay, well, you heard, you heard it from here. All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Hi, thank you. I have two items.
Okay.
One, during the budget workshop on the 26th of March, I believe, my Inspector General, Christine Colliano, she reported out about, we're watching Senate Bill 730, which would increase the audit authority of my office, and I just wanted to give you an update on that. So, on the 3rd of this month, the Senate has, and I'll, I'm going to read, indefinitely postponed and withdrew it from consideration.
Oh, no.
So, that is, that would have had a pretty tremendous impact to budget. The other item I wanted to mention is Operation Stand Down, it's an annual veterans event, it was held over the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, April 25th, 26th, 27th, and on that Friday, we hold veterans court, and that is my office, the courts, the sheriff, state attorney, public defender, all come together to put it on, and it was a very successful event. We processed 61 cases there, waived $16,300, well, nearly that, and we cleared 42 driver's licenses, and my Fasano's office, tax collector's office was there, so they go, went from the courtroom, the makeshift courtroom, to my, my office, my makeshift office, to the tax collector's makeshift office, and they left with their driver's license.
The legal one that'll get them into...
Yeah, well, I mean, they leave with an actual driver's license.
With a star.
Yes, with the star.
Yeah, they've got to have that star on it.
So, it was just a, a great community event, very successful, and I just wanted to, to let everyone know about that.
Great, we have such great constitutionals. Okay, now me, I'm going to try and rip through this real quickly. I wasn't at the tunnels to towers, but my staff was, because Congressman Bilirakis asked me to attend his senior town hall. I did take some pictures, but it was in Newport Ritchie and very well attended, the sheriff was there, a lot of different agencies were there, a lot of our staff, so very well attended. I participated in the Mitchell High School capstone presentations, very interesting to hear our seniors with their ideas, and we've got some great kids heading off to college. Attended the Pasco Corrections Quarterly Recognition Ceremony at the Starky Library with our county administrator, he didn't mention that, but that was a very nice ceremony. Finally got to tour Hope Services, I think that's in Commissioner Waitman's district, if you haven't been there, they've got an amazing program going on. This room right here, this lady works for this, I think it's for the state, and these are, this is all different kinds of things that help people with special needs, that they can come in and check out. And then if, if it works for them, I think they can get them, provided to them. Here, I'll, I'll, I actually have a few of these things in my house, to help you open cans, and it's for people of all ages, so I'd love that thing for the back up there on the upper right, I put it right here on this chair.
The monthly support?
Yeah. And they have, they have a little, they have, they teach skills to people with, with autism and others, and that's a little depart, like a grocery store setup, where they learn how to check out food, and then they go work for Publix. So, it's a very, very cool outfit there on, I think it's Cornerstone on 41. I also attended the Third Annual Women, uplifting women event, there were some people in, from in this room that were there, sold out, people trying to get tickets, and they couldn't get any. It was a great event, I just, I'm so proud of where that group has now come to. The speaker, Effie Santos, from Maddie's Movement, was amazing, she spoke at our AM Skills Dinner. She, her daughter Maddie was killed in a car crash at 19, and her daughter cared a lot about her fellow citizens, her fellow students and kids, and very much about foster kids, and so, they have a wonderful foster program, but I just, I thought it was outstanding, you did a great job.
Thank you.
You did a great job as our emcee.
I want that picture.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't you send that to me?
So, great event, we, we need a bigger space for next year, we just, we can almost double that, I think.
It was awesome.
It was awesome, right? So, thank you all for coming. I hosted an early insight night for Johns Hopkins All Children's. It was a little embarrassing, we had 40 people RSVP, and 12 people showed up, but this is Alicia, who is the CEO of Johns Hopkins. They brought a whole busload of their top executives up to the, to Pasco for the night, and gave us a wonderful talk about what's coming, so we're, we're so very fortunate to be getting this hospital in, in Pasco County. And I'm, they'll be looking to stage a lot more events, especially coming over to your guys' side, so maybe you can work with them, and they, they need people to know what's coming, and get out into the community, they have to fundraise quite a bit to make this hospital happen, and so, I hope you'll get involved. I attended the Rangeland Boulevard Exit Workshop, Extension Workshop, and it was very well attended, there was a line out the door to sign in, and I did give some of my comments to staff, I want, Tina Russo and I, we, we do want to look at how the Sun Coast Trail is being handled at the, at the Sun Coast and Rangeland, where they meet. Tony, I sent you a picture of Starky Ranch, where the roads are now, Rangeland. Commissioner Jaeger, that, that road, Rangeland, has been there since the 70s. It's been planned, and for all commissioners to know, that that was, that was contemplated, yeah, you remember, when John Gallagher was county administrator, and actually, it was our family who, in, in laying out Starky Ranch, wanted two roads, and, and frankly, I think if I were doing Bexley or Angeline, I would have done what we did, and that is not put one big road going through their development of Angeline, which is Sun, Sun Lake Boulevard, it's going to be a big road. We pushed for two, two roads, so we have Lake Blanche Drive going east-west, and we have Rangeland going east-west. And I think we would have tried to make the two be more equal, but the developer kind of made Rangeland a little superior to Lake Blanche, but they really slowed it down with the traffic circles, and the road needs to happen, we can't have only one east-west road in Trinity Odessa, we already saw what happened when the, the oil spilled on 54, and that shut the road down. But we have to be very mindful that communities on both sides, Commissioner, in Bexley and in Starky, those are walkable, bikeable communities, and they don't, they don't want to lose that, so safety is going to be of utmost importance. But I, I do think the roads can coexist with the neighborhood very well. Let's see, we, then there was the Tri-County Workshop, thank you all who attended, we had really great attendance from the other counties, the most we've ever had, I think, as, and we're missing just a couple, Latvalla from Pinellas and the Chair...
Kenega?
Yeah, he was just returning from Europe, his son's in school in, in England, so. Then afterwards, commit, the two county administrators, so all three administrators went to AM Skills, and a commissioner from Pinellas County, and so I thought that went really, really well, and thank you all for, for taking that time. On Sunday, we had, hosted the annual community cleanup in Beacon Square, and it rained in the morning, so we thought we weren't going to get a... we weren't going to get a great turnout, but I got there at noon and the trucks were just pouring in. Actually I had a hoarder who was the wife of a hoarder and they were doing a good job of, of getting that stuff cleared out. Apparently they got hit pretty hard in the hurricane and ever since then the husband was just out collecting stuff. You know, people deal with things in different ways. So I drove through the neighborhood. There were a lot of people who should have been participating that weren't, but I, I don't know the numbers. I did not, maybe I got the numbers, but I didn't get the numbers to, to, to see how much they got. But look, you could see that pile of mattresses. They were laying in someone's yard, all those mattresses. So you know, in my neighborhoods, this is why I like sweeps. I, I, I don't want those to be out there in people's front door. So let's see. Oh, and yesterday, the county administrator and Kathy Pearson and I attended, and, oh yeah, and Eric, we went through the, I can't see you Eric, so I didn't know you were even here. We, we went toured maps. I don't, if you have not toured that, it's the Museum of Archaeology and Paleontology and what's the S? I don't remember what the S is. Science? We have a freaking gem. It's at Wendell Crin. He's got a five thousand square foot space when he needs fifty thousand because they have artifacts from all over the world. They have thousands of kids coming up there and going through. They have summer camps. They've got mummies and they, African masks and just, it's just like the US, it's like the museum of history, natural history up there. So we're going to put our heads together and figure out what we can do, I hope, to help him stay here in Pasco County. We're very lucky to have that possible opportunity here. So thank you very much. And tomorrow night, six o'clock, David, is the Second Grand Boulevard. What do you call it?
It's a...
Charette?
Charette.
Charette. Okay. So we have a, at six o'clock, we have a Grand Boulevard Charette Stakeholder Engagement Number Two. It's similar to what we did in, at Gunn Highway in fifty-four. We want to reimagine the Elfris community and bring it back to what it was back when the train came through there and there was a train stop there, the Elfris Spur. And it's got the bones for a great little community. And, and so we're help, doing a planning exercise to help, help put the bones, put the rules back in place that let it grow and become something wonderful again. So I think that's it. Okay. We are done. Thanks everybody.
I believe it.